Good evening. At this time, we call to order a budget hearing of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, April the 4th, 2022, at 5:00 PM here at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. We note for the record, we have a quorum consisting of four commissioners present, and we believe that Commissioner Swales will be joining us by Zoom. So he's here?
He is.
Okay, so we have a quorum consisting of all five commissioners. Four are present, and Commissioner Swales is joining us by Zoom. So we want to welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight. The purpose of this afternoon's budget hearing is to present the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget for the county. We'll also receive public comments on the budget. However, before we begin, we need to amend and approve tonight's agenda to add item 3B, Public Comment. So this time, is there a motion to amend and approve the budget hearing agenda?
I'll make a motion that we amend and approve the meeting agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to amend the budget hearing agenda by adding item 3B, Public Comment, and to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster is second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to amend the budget hearing agenda by adding item 3B, Public Comment, and approving the agenda signify by raising your right hand? All opposed? Same sign. And Mr. Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote in favor of amending the agenda.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the budget hearing agenda is so amended and approved. The next item on the agenda is 3A, the Proposed Budget for Fiscal Year 2023. So at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our county manager, Mr. Turner, who's going to present the proposed fiscal year 2023 budget.
All right. Thank you, and good evening. So pleased so many people came out to hear about the 2023 budget today. What we'll do is go through the budget, just some of the minimum three hearings that we'll have. There's a few things we just need to work through today, and more quickly, things that do impact the budget. But we'll go through the items that we do have on board today. So kind of starting off with our revenues expenditures for projected FY '23. We'll go into capital improvement, planning, personnel requests, the COLA, and we do have new programming to talk about longevity pay. So we'll kind of talk through all these items, just to see if there are any thoughts to those, and just what the overall budget is at this time. Just kind of starting with it, for us and for the board, just for the sake of what we're looking at within the budget, it starts with the vision of what the budget used to be. The budget kind of stems from board vision, to then what the overall projects, overall direction of all departments. So really, we just ask that you think about that as far as the overall vision of what you're seeing for the next year. We want to take every year in year-by-year increments, but also too with the five-year outlook, just to understand exactly where you're going with the budget. That's going to dictate a lot of what the departments do, how they're budgeting, what those numbers look like. So we just want to make sure that as we are looking at the budget, we are thinking about our long-term goals. And as you do flip, the next slide that you'll see in front of you is our FY '23 projected revenues. This does show as far as the 2021 actual numbers, 2022 budgeted, 2022 actual, and the 2023 budgeted numbers that we have right now. So you can see, we have a slight trend upwards as far as what our 2023 budgeted revenues will be at, about $25.3 million, up from the $23.1 million that we have budgeted within the current fiscal year. You can kind of see that little bit of growth. So we're going to still be conservative as far as how we're budgeting those numbers, but we do want to make sure that we are trying to accurately capture what that is. There will be some things that we will have within budgeting that maybe aren't 100% going to be captured, things like any alcohol licenses. We don't quite know exactly what those look like at this time, since we don't have history to those, and that was just passed in January. So there might be, so this gives us still a little bit of flexibility as far as our overall, the structure as far as revenues are concerned. Before we flip page, any questions about this slide and the revenues? All right. All right. So as you do flip the next page, that goes into the FY '23 expenditures. And again, I did mention that this particular set of slides is kind of showing you by category. So this is just talking about categorically. Still is going to give you the overall number that you need to see, but this is just categorically what those, what those look like. As far as our accounting concerns, that's just looking at, just really the wages and things like that, it's coding for us. But when you're looking at your FY '23 expenditures, again, 21 actual, 22 budgeted, 22 actual to this point, and then the 23 projected budget. So with our overall 23 expenditure budget, then you're talking about about $24.2 million. And that's going to be up from where we were, about $22.99 million. Again, this is just categorically. All right. Any questions before we flip off of this? Do apologize, this next one's a little bit small. Try to make it as reasonable as possible. But this is again going back into FY '23. And this is more of a breakdown. This is going by department when you're looking at these numbers. So as you look at this, this does break down every single department that we have for the next two slides, just so it wasn't going to be too small for you to see. But you'll see the differences that we do have as far as the overall departmental requests that we've had in there. We have met with all departments to try and capture everything that's been needed. There will still be some things, I think, that could potentially change within the budget. Just depends on some decisions that we'll have in store for us that we'll change that we'll talk about. But at least at our baseline, this is where we are as far as our FY '23 expenditures, going by department. Any questions about the departmental breakdown before we move on? All right. As you do flip to the next page, we're talking about capital improvement plans. So we've kind of talked about this a little bit here and there. But this is our five-year plan as far as, and you have this documentation email. But this is your five-year plan as far as what your capital's going to look like, all the projects that we are, you know, projected to work on. It's a plan that you want to look at to adopt that five-year outlook, so that you kind of know exactly how we're allocating resources, exactly what capital projects we're working on. Again, the capital projects, those items that are over $5,000 and have a couple of years of life to them at the very least. So we want to make sure every year that we are reevaluating that. We will still look to adopt the five-year plan within this budget. There'll be some alterations that do happen, of course, within it. So for instance, some things that we're doing even as this, within this year that we're looking at, things within the outlook of the five-year plan in the next year and further years, we'll move those to this year as we kind of see that we have funds to be able to cover those. And we'll do that every year. Once we get to about that March timeframe, that 75% mark, to where we kind of have a good idea where we're going to finish the year, then most of the times, we'll go back and evaluate our projects that we moved forward from some of the outer years. So a 23 project that could move to this year, or it could be a 24 project that moves to 23 next year. So we just want to keep looking at that month to month, see where we are expenditure-wise, to see if there's projects that we can complete a little bit faster than what we originally anticipated. But just as you're looking at the numbers of the CIP years, we're going to kind of hover around this number every year. I'm not going to try to push us beyond that about $1.5, $1.6 million mark. When you're looking at the CIP as well, not only do you want to look at the projects you're completing, you do want to make sure you can actually complete the projects. You can have a CIP that's $5 million, but if you can't complete $5 million worth of projects in the year, you're kind of just overstating your budget. So this is kind of getting more to a number that I feel comfortable. And we can always adjust it if we feel like it is too aggressive as we get into years past, as we pass these years, to see if we need to scale it, or if we're just ahead of schedule and we have the ability to, maybe it's something that we do need to accelerate. But that's something that we'll evaluate every year, and we'll always approve a five-year budget, capital projects budget. Now, every year that we go into it, then we're just going to have departments request the outer year. So at this particular time, we're going to adopt five years. Next year, departments would be requesting year six. All right. Any questions? Capital improvement appointment? All right. Flipping to personnel requests. Now, these are some of the decisions that we're going to have to make a little bit sooner than later, preferably more towards the sooner, because these directly impact overall budget. So as we're looking at personnel, we've talked about these within the retreats, the spring and fall retreat last year. Is looking at these personnel requests that we have, as we're looking to continue to grow 901, we're kind of projecting scaling out for growth and just current needs, another station that we're going to need here in the near future. We have talked about just a little bit with Sheriff's Department, looking at possibly a maintenance tech. But then we do have two maintenance techs on staff that do cover all of our buildings and structures. So we talk about all the building structures, including wells. We talk about 30 buildings and/or structures that we have two people covering, which is quite a load. And also with the jail, that does need usually major work. It would be nice to have someone that's there 100% of the day that we could just be able to work with in conjunction with our other techs. We talked about too with the Marshals Department, looking at adding a code enforcement officer. I know that that is a lot of coverage that you're talking about when you're talking about the marshal, the ground that we do have to cover. I know it does target some specific areas as the primary objective right now. But as we do continue to move towards the future, we want to look at how to better cover it and be more proactive than reactive, and not be being responsive to just phone calls. We can have, you know, at least two people who continue to grow that department, where we're more able to get out into the community and be proactive into those issues that we are seeing. Public works, we've talked about at the retreat as well, that they are still too short from where we were about 15 years ago as far as overall staff. The senior center is indeed a program tech as we do ramp their programming back up. They had been operating at a minimal staff and minimal timeframes since COVID, but as we start to fully reopen, there'll be a need for other people to be able to work there. And then something we've kind of talked about, and that we talked about with fire, is looking at having a fire services coordinator, like a fire coordinator of some sorts, that's there to help with training, help with paperwork, things of that nature. So kind of as we look at this in particular, the decision on the board is going to be, do we want to add any of these positions? And then the second thought to that is, do we add them at what percent funding? So if we add, if we said we wanted to add a position and we're adding them at 100% funding, that would be a position that we would be allocating for July 1. If we say they wanted to be 50% funding, we would be allocated from the start of January 1. So there's flexibility with that, within that, it could be 50%, 75%, 25%, whatever we want to look at within that. If we're saying we're adding a position, or we're staggering in positions, whatever amount of positions or new positions you want to have created, doesn't have to be all July 1 positions. But this will be somewhere within the decision realm that we need to get to pretty early, so that we're able to calculate that into the budget. Doesn't have to be something that you necessarily have to decide on tonight necessarily, but more of an, even if it's within the next several weeks consensus amongst the board, that this is what we want to do, this is the position we want to add, at this level of funding, then we're able to recalculate the budget to see exactly where everything falls at that point in time. Any questions about personnel? All right. Awesome. Other decision that we'll have coming up quick, from you see from this slide, cost of living, so our COLA. So we were able to do a COLA of about 3.5% last year. As you can see, the first chart that you have there, the 10.6%, that is for the, basically the metro area, the Atlanta Sandy Springs Roswell area for the last, for the last year, but we'll roll in 12 months of February. The second chart that you see there is just for the south region in general, so overall south at 8.4%. So what we have calculated into the budget right now from the number we've gone over is us being at a COLA of 7%. It does still fall under the overall CPI. At this particular time, we're not going to catch the CPI. It's going to be extremely difficult for us to do that. And it's continuing to go up pretty well every month on a rule in 12-month basis. But we decided on a 7% to at least put into the budget. We can always, as the board makes a decision, we can always make changes to that. Let's flip to the next page. The cost of living continued. So this just gives you the look of exactly what those numbers mean as far as 3.5, 5, and a 7% COLA, with 3.5 being at about $300,000, a 5% being at about $440,000, and a 7% being at $600,000. Again, as we're kind of looking at this, and the thought that I have behind this is that if we come in with about a 7% COLA this year, followed by somewhere in the ballpark about 5% next year, it gets to where we can shift our floor to where our hiring level is, to a minimum of $30,000. A 7 followed by a 5 would put us to where we have about 23 to 24 people on staff that would be below that $30,000 mark. So it just gives us an opportunity, because we talked about, being able to increase our overall wages, gives us that opportunity with that kind of mindset that we bring up our floor to $30,000 by next year, and we just absorb the cost next year of those other people that aren't quite reaching the $30,000 mark. Again, this will be another decision that the board is going to have to make. Again, the 7% is already put into the budget as of right this second. So if you want to see a change to that, that would be a board decision. It would be consensus, even as we're working through this next month, emails, whatever the case is. And then we would just have to make the adjustments to the budget. If it does say a 7%, 7% is in the budget right this second. So everything that you see right now, 7% is in there. So the only change would be then if we do go off of 7%. I would probably say we don't need to go beyond the 7%, even though COLA is trending more towards 9. It's just going to be hard to really catch the COLA. You're not going to catch the COLA 100%. I think this gets us to a comfortable place to where we can actually really give the staff something, but build ourselves towards where we've improved wages at a pretty high level. Any COLA questions? My final slide. This is new programming. This will be another board decision that you have to determine if you want to do something like this. Longevity pay. So this will be new program to reward staff. So as you kind of see from the chart that's in this, it just goes by years of service. So each year of service qualifies to reach a certain dollar amount. So someone that's less than one year would not qualify to receive anything based off of longevity pay. Working all the way up to 30-plus years, being at $600. This would be something I would suggest that we look at on a yearly basis at a July 1 kind of number. So we would just make this sort of a July 1 payout. We'd evaluate it as their status as far as July 1. So if I was at, if I reached my one-year mark as of July 1, I would fall by for $75, for instance. Again, this is not something you have to decide on absolutely tonight, but something that will need a decision if you want to do that relatively quickly by consensus, just so that we can then, again, work this into the budget numbers. This comes out to about $36,000 with what the total of it would be to go across staff. And again, this will be a kind of a first check within July payment. We would evaluate tenure at July 1, and then we'll make whatever that next check is, that first check that comes in July, would be the payout of that.
So a lump sum?
Yeah, that's right. Will be taxable, so.
Did you say you already had this in the budget?
This is, this is not, this is not. So this will be one that we would have to also decide for us to then work into the budget. Totality comes to about based off of where everybody sits right this second, or whenever I made the calculations, to about $36,000. I'd imagine it probably stays pretty close to that number, just the attrition. So I don't think that that number's going to wildly increase unless we change the amount of the payout.
How's that treated? As a bonus, or how is that?
It's not really.
Can't really have a bonus?
Bonus pay, but I guess you can kind of sort of consider it's like a bonus, non-bonus for staff. But it doesn't necessarily classify as per se bonus pay, but just, I guess it's as close as you can be to it not being any car runners, to where if you just sort of rewarding that longevity of staff, the tenure of the staff, just like that, I've definitely passed other places. A lot of people do that, just as a reward for people being here. You know, it is something that can kind of help with people leaving, if they know that, you know, hey, I'm going to get $400, $500. If I stay, you know, a little bit longer, then sometimes a little bit more would do that. But just something that I think would be worthwhile looking at. And again, maybe in years down the road, if we want to look at adjusting the amount of what the payouts are, as we're just going down the road and getting more into the program, that can also be done too. This was kind of what I looked at and generated, kind of based off more of the minimums and something that wasn't going to be extreme high impact as far as cost is concerned to the county for new programming.
Okay.
And this would pick up, like you said, January 1st, but if January 1 was their 15th anniversary, they would go ahead and receive $300 for that.
And I was thinking we'd do it for July 1. But same, yeah, same concept. Yeah, same concept though.
Other questions?
Is there a budget question? I think that's the last slide.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner. The next item on the agenda is 3B, Public Comments. So at this time, we're going to open the floor for public comment. The purpose of this public comment section is to give citizens the opportunity to make comments about the proposed budget. This is not a question-and-answer section, but if you have questions, we're going to ask you to write those down and submit those along with your contact information, and we'll try to have someone contact you in the next few days and answer your questions. When you're called individually, please come up to the podium and begin by giving your name and address. Each speaker will have up to five minutes to speak, and we will have the time displayed over on this table for you to use to pace your remarks. Each person may only speak once, and you cannot yield unused time to another person. All comments at this hearing must be limited to the proposed budget, which is the topic of this hearing. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of decorum as commissioners, and this just means that you are civil and respectful, and you avoid personal attacks. Members of the public may not interrupt while others are speaking. So at this time, would anyone like to make a public comment about the budget that's been presented? If you would like to, raise your hand, and we'll have you come up one at a time. Anyone who would like to make a public comment about the budget? Okay, no takers. The next item on the agenda is announcements. Mr. Turner, do you have anything?
We'll get the next budget scheduled. We're likely to do it before the work session in April, but we'll work with scheduling and commissioners.
Okay. We're going to be holding a public hearing, a regular board meeting tonight. The public hearing is scheduled to begin at 5:30. If that hearing goes long, the regular board meeting, which would normally start at 6:00 PM, will start shortly after the conclusion of the public hearing. So if you're here for one or the other, just be patient, and as soon as that public hearing is over, we may have a short recess or a short break, and then we'll take up the public hearing, or the regular board meeting. Commissioner Franklin, do you have anything? It's Mr. Foster.
No.
Commissioner Swales, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester, do you have anything? All right. This time, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester's motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster, second to the motion. All in favor of the motion to adjourn signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I vote that we adjourn.
Okay. Thank you. The motion will carry forward to zero, and we stand adjourned. Public hearing will begin at 5:30, which is about five minutes. Good afternoon. At this time, I called to order a public hearing of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, April the 4th, 2022, at 5:30 PM here at the Franklin County Justice Center in Karnesville, Georgia. We note for the record that we have a quorum consisting of five commissioners here. We have four present, and Commissioner Swales is joining us by Zoom. So Commissioner Swales, can you give us a roll call that you're present?
Yes, I am present.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swales. So we have a quorum consisting of all five commissioners present. Four are actually here, and one commissioner, Commissioner Swales, is joining us by Zoom. So thank you, everyone, for coming and joining us this afternoon. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for this afternoon's public hearing. So commissioners, at this time, is there a motion to approve the public hearing agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin has made the motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster is second to the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the hearing agenda as presented signify by raising your right hand. All opposed? Same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Well, actually, you're voting. Are you voting to approve?
I'm voting to approve, yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion will carry forward to zero, and the agenda is approved as presented. The purpose of this afternoon's public hearing is to receive public comments for or against proposed zoning applications that will be considered for action by the board at tonight's regular board meeting that will immediately follow this hearing. No action will be taken at this hearing, and all parties are welcome to remain after the public hearing for the regular meeting itself, which should start at 6:00. But if this hearing goes long, it will, the regular meeting will start shortly after we adjourn the public hearing, and we'll announce that time. We have several items on the agenda for this hearing. After introducing each item, we'll ask the planning director to present a description of the application, as well as his recommendation and the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll ask the applicants, if present, to speak first on behalf of their application. After those applicants have spoken, we'll call first for those who wish to speak for the application, and then we'll call for anyone wishing to speak against the application. At the end of public comments for each application, the applicant will have the opportunity to make a summary statement and offer rebuttal concerning any public comments that were made. Commissioners may also question the applicant at this time. Members of the public who wish to comment either for or against an application will be recognized and called individually. And when you come up here to the podium, we'll ask you to start by giving your name and address when you come up before you begin. Please note that all comments must pertain to the public hearing items that we are considering tonight. You may not speak to any other topic or application. Each person will have up to five minutes to speak, and will have a timer visible to the speaker so that you will know how much time you have remaining. Questions may not be asked, and speakers may not yield unused time to another person. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of decorum as each commissioner. This includes being respectful and civil and avoiding personal attacks. All comments should be directed to the chair, and members of the audience may not comment or interrupt when someone else is speaking. We just ask everyone, we have a big crowd here tonight, we ask that you help us to have a fair and impartial hearing by being courteous to others. We will give each person here tonight sufficient time to express your concerns, but everyone on either side of an issue will do so in a manner that respects those on the other side who may hold differing opinions. Anyone who fails to conduct themselves appropriately and violates the rules of the quorum or otherwise disrupts this hearing will be asked to sit down. When you come up to the podium and start your public comment, all your comments must be addressed to the board. You may not turn around and face the crowd. You are here tonight to speak to the board and not to those in attendance. We ask each person to take care, to observe and respect the five-minute time limit for public comment. This limit will be strictly enforced. It is very important that everyone be given the opportunity to speak who wishes to do so, but it's equally important that everyone can hear what is being said. Members of the public are not permitted to interrupt while others are speaking, and we respectfully ask that you refrain from any side conversations. If you need to talk to someone, kindly, quietly, get up, go outside, and you can return when you're finished with a conversation. Interrupting or talking over others in hearing are not permitted at any time. The first three items on the agenda include requests to rezone property and obtain variances. These three items are all part of the same application and will be heard together. So 3A, Corridor Development Incorporated of 1550 North Brown Road, Suite 125, Lawrenceville, Georgia 30043, has filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture-intensive to residential multifamily on an approximately 47.48 acre tract of land located at the intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59, and further identified as tax parcel number 021-013, and a portion of tax parcel number 021-014. Corridor Development Incorporated has also filed a variance application for an increase in density, an increase in the number of units allowed per building, as well as a front, side, and rear setback variance for residential multifamily development on an approximately 47.48 acre tract located at the intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59, and further identified as tax parcel number 021-013, and a portion of tax parcel number 021-014. Corridor Development Incorporated has also filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture-intensive to highway business on an approximately five-acre tract located at the intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59, and further identified as tax parcel number 021-014. So this time, we're going to ask our planning director, Mr. Delosier, to summarize these applications for the boards. Mr. Delosier?
Yeah, good evening, gentlemen. So as I stated, Corridor Development has submitted a couple of different applications. One is going to be for a highway business rezoning for the purpose of, as they stated, a retail space, a convenience station, and then some storage, some personal storage buildings, like climate control storage buildings behind the gas station. They've also filed for... They've also filed for a rezon from ag-intensive to residential multifamily on the tax parcel number 021-013 and a portion of 021-014. The total number of units they're seeking to develop is 399 units, which is going to require a couple of different variances from our zoning regulations. The variance, the exact variance that they've requested are going to be, to increase density from our, our allowed eight units per acre to 8.4 units per acre, an increase in the number of units per building from four units per building to six units per building, a variance for the, for a reduced front setback from 50 feet, which is what we call out, to 15 feet, a variance for a side yard setback from what we call out of 20 feet to 10 feet, and then a variance on the rear setback line of 50 feet to 25 feet. All these were heard by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny all of these applications. My recommendation for the highway business rezoning would be to approve that one, and then the, the variance request from eight to 8.4 units per acre would be to deny, a variance from four units per building to six units per building would be to deny, a variance from 50-foot rear setback to 15-foot would be to deny that variance, but grant up to 35 feet as a rear setback, because we do have, we do have other zoning districts that, that allow at least 35 feet on the rear setback. So I figured that was a good compromise there. And then a variance from a side setback of 20 feet to 10 feet would be to deny that as well. And then the rezoning from ag-intensive to residential multifamily would be to approve, essentially approve it, but ensure that they develop according to our current regulations, our current code would be what the recommendation would be.
Okay, did, and again, they, the planning zoning recommended that they deny them all, so there were, there are no issues of conditions because they didn't put it in. Okay, thank you, Mr. Delozer. This time, we're going to ask the applicants to come forward and speak on behalf of these applications. I'm not sure who's here. If you'll come up and introduce yourself.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Shane Lanham. Address is 1550 North Brown Road, Suite 125 in Lawrenceville. Here on behalf of Corridor Development, requesting, as Mr. Delozer said, rezoning of the subject property, which overall is approximately 52 and a half acres located at the intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59. We are located just under 1,000 feet from Interstate 85 on the east side, southeast side of 85. We are requesting the approval of the applications to permit a mixed-use development. We originally submitted for 399 units, but that came with it, to get to that number was that variance request, to increase the density from eight units to 8.4. After receiving the staff report and discussing it internally, we can agree to forego that variance and, and stick within the code of eight units per acre. That would reduce the maximum unit count by a degree to 379 total units, so it's a modest reduction there in the overall unit count. But as I mentioned, a, a mixed-use development with mix of commercial and residential uses. So the entire assemblage is approximately 52 and a half acres. We've got five acres at the pin corner of the intersection, Highway 51, Highway 59, set aside for commercial uses. As Mr. Delozer said, we, we envision there a mix of retail suite, you know, we think some, you know, small restaurant space could work there, commercial suites. We also have, on the site plan depicted, a convenience store with fuel pumps there, similar to the use that's located across the highway to the, to the northwest. But a total of five acres of, of commercial space at the intersection, and then we'd step down, moving to, to the south away from that intersection to the residential component. The, the residential component has, has a variety of amenities which would be available for the use and enjoyment of residents. That includes a central active amenity area with a pool and cabana, with, you know, pool deck and some, some lounge areas, also pickleball courts, which is increasing in, in popularity in, in residential communities. I don't know if y'all are familiar with it. I haven't played a lot of or any pickleball myself. I think it's basically a, a slower version of tennis. I think it's a slower court, bigger ball. But in any event, that, that's an amenity area that's in, 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 in increasing popularity these days, and we definitely provide a fair thing to be a good amenity for residents. So in additional, in addition to that central active amenity area, we have another kind of more active, you know, green space requirement towards, I'm sorry, green space area towards the south of the subject property. For that area, we envision some more green space, a dog park. It could also accommodate a totlot, kind of a small recreational type of playground type of use there, in addition to just some passive green space amenity area. In addition to those two main amenity areas, we also have some smaller pocket parks and dog walking areas mixed throughout the development that residents could, could walk to and access through a system of internal sidewalks, so folks walking their dogs could, you know, walk down the street, stop at the little corner pocket park on their, on their block as they make their rounds or as they're walking to one of the more active amenity areas. Would submit to you that the proposed development is compatible with the land uses of surrounding properties. It's compatible with the policies of the Franklin County Comprehensive Plan and will also provide an appropriate transition of land uses, moving away from a, you know, area that's designated for intense commercial uses and where there are some existing more intense commercial uses, both along the Interstate 85 corridor, at the interchange, and then also at the intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59. So as I mentioned, to the, to the northwest, there's the existing, you know, truck stop convenience store with, with some restaurant space there. There's a trucking business or two on, on Sandy Cross Road to our northeast and east. And so where you have those more intense commercial uses focused at that major intersection of two-state routes and at the, you know, activity center at the, at the interchange, we would carve out some commercial uses to complement that growing commercial area, but then it would step down to the proposed residential component before stepping down again more as we move away from that activity center. And that is compatible with the policies of the Comprehensive Plan, which identifies the subject property as within the gateway corridor character area. So as, as y'all know, the Comprehensive Plan is a good tool to help guide land use decisions when they are brought to you by, by applicants, and the Comprehensive Plan does not recommend the same land uses everywhere in the county. It's precise and identifies certain areas, certain growth corridors, certain specific intersections and activity centers where different types of land uses may be appropriate than they would be as you get off of Interstate 85, as you get further into the, you know, more established areas of the county, rural areas of the county where there's, there's not the same type of commercial presence or commercial land uses. The Comprehensive Plan also acknowledges a need for housing development in the county. It, it provides that only 0.8% of existing housing units are single-family attached or townhome units in, in the county. It, it discusses evolving housing demands, the need for quality housing as economic development activities continue in the counter with jobs and job growth. It, it identifies a need to provide quality housing for, for, for people who are going to work in those businesses to live that are, that are convenient. You know, a lot of times when, when companies are looking at locations to relocate or establish a new business, part of their, you know, decision-making process is, okay, well, where are our employees going to live? Do they have good access to, to the job site? Do they have good access to our place of business? And the Comprehensive Plan spends a, a good bit of time discussing that. It also suggests restricting low-density residential along the 85 corridor, which actually discourages lower-density residential development in those targeted areas, specifically along the Interstate 85 corridor. And, and it also talks about, as I mentioned before, an acknowledgement of residential land uses and housing to provide that critical mass for job growth, for business growth. And we would submit to you respectfully that that's what the project would do, provide a good base of residential critical mass to support continued economic development, job growth in the county. But it also helps make a, a commercial corridor more viable, and that's why we think that with the proposed residential component, there's a good opportunity for a five-acre commercial component located at the, at the intersection. So a, a, as I, as I mentioned, we, we appreciate the staff report and their recommendation of approval. We, we can agree to, to forego the, the variance to increase the density to 8.4. And as I mentioned at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, we also included some variance in our, in our request and would respectfully request your approval of those variances being the increase in the maximum number of units per building from four to six. And then, as Mr. Delozer mentioned in our application, we requested a front setback of 15 feet. The staff recommendation was 35 feet, and so to try and, and get closer to the staff recommendation, we could agree to increase that to 25 feet. The side setback, I think we requested 10 feet there, and then for the rear setback, we requested a reduction to 25 feet. The staff's recommendation was 35 feet, and again, to try to get closer to staff's recommendation, we, we can agree to increase that to 30. So, so modest increases there to try to get closer to the, the staff recommendation. But as I mentioned, would respectfully submit to you that the proposed development would allow a land use that's compatible with existing and surrounding land uses. There are already commercial uses located at that intersection in, in close proximity to the subject property. We've got good convenient access to Interstate 85, obviously a major transportation corridor or less than 1,000 feet away from, from that right away. It would also provide an appropriate transition of land uses, moving away from that activity center located at the intersection by going from commercial, stepping down to the residential component. And then at the rear of the site, at the southwestern boundary, there's a good natural transition point there, because there's a stream that forms just about all of that southwestern boundary line. So that would, again, you know, be a, a part of that transition with all the buffering and setbacks that are required against that, that stream to, to, you know, underscore that that transition that, that I've, I've mentioned here tonight. So would also submit to you that the proposed development is compatible with the policies of Franklin County Comprehensive Plan, which, which talks about for targeted areas of the county, more intense land uses with access to services, you know, it doesn't recommend higher density where there's no sewer or where there's not sufficient utility capacity to serve a proposed development. We think that, that also provides supporting grounds for, for approval of, of the application and, and also meets the more general housing policy discussed in the Comprehensive Plan, where it talks about it being not just for additional housing, but for diversifying the, the housing that's available within the county to meet, you know, economic development goal, goals, things of that nature. So thank you very much for, for your time and consideration. I'll conclude here. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I reserve the balance of my time for a vote.
We will ask, we'll allow commissioners to ask questions at the very end.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. This time, we're going to call one at a time for those who wish to speak in favor of this application. Please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Also, remember, as you come up to the podium, start by giving your name and address, and we'll have a timer visible so that you can pace your remarks to five minutes or less. And remember, all comments must only pertain to the corridor application. So this time, if you would like to speak in favor of these applications, please raise your hand. Yeah, this is in favor. If, if you'd like to speak in favor or support of these applications, if you raise your hand, allow you to come up and speak. Make sure you don't miss anyone. One more time, anyone who would like to speak in favor? Okay? At this time, we're going to call one at a time for those who wish to speak against this application. Again, raise your hand, wait to be recognized. Remember to start by giving your name and address. There will be a timer visible for you, and it has a little audible beep. We will, we ask everyone to respect the five-minute time limit. We will cut, summarily cut your remarks at five minutes and ask you to have a seat. And remember, all comments must only pertain to the corridor applications that we've just heard presented. So this time, if you would like to speak against this application, raise your hand. Mr. Martin, come up.
Alan Martin, 2656 Reg. 88. I want to give you a copy of what I'm saying, because the last time I did this, I ran out of time, so make sure you get it all. All this information I'm going to share can't come from the March 3rd county papers. First thing with the quote that was put in there concerning the letter of intent on rezoning, quote, "Rezoning property to resident, to residential multifamily is better for the community than current zoning commercial industry. The property is much better suited as a residential district in line with adjacent residential properties." My reaction to that wasn't very good. Who are the developers to assume they know what is better for our community? Shouldn't the county citizens of this committee define and be in charge of our land use, not interlopers? How much credibility should we give to this or any developer, considering their past contributions to the ever-increasing rent nest emanating from Atlanta and creeping north? They're interested in dollars, we're interested in quality of life. Consider that the term adjacent residential properties are I-85, one inactive truck stop, two active truck stops, the lube shop, the convenience store, sandwich shop, a restaurant, a trucking company, a towing junkyard business, a truck repair business, and a lot of for-sale sites. It seems to me to make that statement laughable when it says property is much better suited as a residential district in line with adjacent potential properties. This seems like an extremely dense population center, having 380 lots, townhouses at eight lots per acre. The numbers I'm giving are going to be based off the 399 because I didn't have that modification they just announced. But those are... So the 399 lots with the developers' variance request, 8.4 lots per acre, and the variance request changed from four to six units per building with one building per lot. That's a 47.48 acre. The approval of the lots per acre, units per building, townhouse variance request, if only one person per unit arrives, six units per lot, 399 lots, there'd be a population of that community of 2,394 people. That's with one. With 380, that'd be 2,280 people. The population jumped in one area of 2,394 people. It's 10%, 10.2% growth from the 2020 census, where the whole county grew at only 6.1% in the 10 years from the 2020, 2010 census. In addition, with just one person per unit, the project's population will be larger than all, but the 2020 census of Carolina-Royston at 2,649, with Onus 2,143, Franklin Springs at 55, Carsville 713, Cannon 643. No doubt that this will be a bedroom community supplying most, if not all, rest is being workers and shoppers to other counties. For the other counties, they hit the goldmine. For Franklin County, we get the shaft. Franklin County needs more industry, not a massive bedroom community. We need to critically consider the impact on the county's water, sewer, fire department, law enforcement, EMT, school system, traffic patterns, and other infrastructure issues making this decision. The ball's in your court. Play it wisely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. If you'd like to speak against this application, if you'll raise your hand. Everyone, please hold the applause. We, we have a long number of people to get through, and we want to be able to do that in the most expeditious manner possible. Anyone who'd like to speak? Okay, you can come up.
Well, mine is on behalf of everyone.
No, you, you have to give your remarks up at the podium. You're welcome to read whatever you'd like, but, but you're speaking on your own behalf.
Oh, well, now I put my name.
Okay, but come, come on up.
Even though it doesn't make much sense, because I don't have a Even though it doesn't make much sense, because I don't have a wife or kids.
Just remember, when you start, give your name and address.
Okay. Oh, this is not going to make sense then, at all. Kelly Stagnoli, 720 Aiken Road, Martin, Georgia. My family and I recently moved to Franklin County. We purchased our home in 40 acres last summer. I want to emphasize, this home is not a new build, is an older home that was derelict of the property that had been extensively littered. I'm not someone who is here after building trying to deny the same opportunity to others. As someone who did not grow up in this county, I can tell you the rural landscape, small-town feel, and sense of community are some of the things that make Franklin County a desirable place. My wife and I left a nearby county because their unfettered growth is resulting in a loss of these characteristics. We brought our small children here to enjoy and participate in what is already a great place to live. I'm not opposed to growth for the sake of inhibiting progress. What concerns me is progress in the wrong direction. I am worried there will be little benefit to our community to offset the increased demand on our infrastructure, the list of which is too great to take the time to mention. I think most are aware of the presentation at the recent school board meeting that suggested a loss of 8.8 million annually. This is just one area of increased demand. Given this location, it is quite likely the residents of this development will travel down South 85 to work and play. In fact, this is the exact reason why the developer finds this location desirable. The residents will buy groceries at Walmart, eat at Applebee's and Commerce, rather than go to IGA and 211 in Lebonia. They will be employed in Banks, Jackson, and other areas outside of Franklin County. And why wouldn't they? They will be on the edge of our county with quick access to 85 and an easy drive away from Franklin for better employment and recreational opportunities. Their only engagement in our community will be to require all of the benefits of living here while their dollars are spent elsewhere. A development like this will create a significant financial burden, and any increase in spending will be enjoyed by other local economies. This developer is from Lawrenceville. They do not live here. This is not their home, this is not their community, and they have one job. It is not to preserve our values, it is not to provide a service to us, it is to improve Franklin County. It is not to improve Franklin County, sorry! They want to toss up as many roofs as fast and as cheap as they can and then move on to the next unsuspecting community. Their job is to sell this to you. It is not their job to worry about how this impacts our community. That is our job. They tell us not to be worried about the cost or the change in our way of life. We shouldn't worry about how this will impact our children. The best sales pitch is that maybe it will bring in some restaurants. They want us to sell the soul of our homes for what, a Starbucks and Applebee's? No, thank you. I am concerned that the continued substandard suggestions to the community will give the impression that Franklin County is obstinate, refusing any change. I don't think this is the case. If change is in order, it should be welcomed, but it must be an improvement. This is not an improvement. As I said at the outset, I do not oppose growth for the sake of inhibiting progress. I oppose going in the wrong direction, making Franklin County just like everywhere else and losing what makes this place special. Remember, you were elected to represent us, not the developer, and I strongly request this project not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stagnoli. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, you can come up.
My name is State Cars, 1918-1, Highway 59, Carlsville, Georgia. My location is across from me a mile from this intersection we're talking about. We've lived there 56 years, my husband all his life. We've raised three children, we love the area, and he values the property that's been in his family for a long time. We don't need a subdivision in the rural area that we're in. As taxpayers, this may not be the right thing to say, but I'm going to ask it anyway. As taxpayers, will we be allowed to carry dogs and walk them in the car? As I said, we've lived there 56 years, where we live it now, and we don't feel like that we need 300 and plus houses. And right now, to get out of our driveway, it's almost impossible. You've got to look both ways. Both of us are looking, I'm looking this way, he's looking that way, because all the trucks, 18-wheelers, that are hauling chips to the 198 plant that kind of slid in. And can you imagine, if anybody happens to go up Cars, that's going to live this place, that's going to add more traffic, 59. And it's got enough already. We, even with the bridge closed, you know, that's all, the trucks and trailers don't need to go up Cars, they're going up 198. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Cars. Okay, if you'd like to speak, if you'll raise your hand, come on up.
My name is Courtney Wong, 451 Highway 326, Carlsville. I'm a local farmer here. This county was built on agriculture. I grew up here and remained here in this county as a farmer myself. I love the passion and the pride of this farming that shines through our county. There's nothing I'd rather do than continue to farm here and pass on my love for the animals and land to my children and grandchildren. However, in recent years, I've been really worried about, worried that this dream for my future and my children's future may not be possible. Every year with more growth has come higher taxes, and every year, more farmland's disappearing. It's getting harder and harder to farm. For those that don't know, the farmers are at the mercy of the market. We cannot ask anyone for more money and compensate for the tax increases. Bringing in all the housing developments with no industry to compensate will put the extra on the back of the taxpayers. And for the farmers with larger plots of land, that would be a huge blow. The eventual outcome would be that the farmers will no longer be able to afford to run their farming operations, and then you basically run it. I've spent 15 years building my business, and to think of losing all that time to government taxes and backwards unchecked growth is just really, like, really sickening to me. Change is inevitable, and I think everyone in this room understands this. Our goal is, or at least my goal, I'm not here to stop growth, but I'm here to stop the backwards way in which it's been proceeding in the last few years. We want a plan and we want balance. So far, we've been told that we were close-minded, and so far, the growth that's been presented to us has been only in the form of a rock quarry, which would be detrimental to land, a rendering plant from a company with a well-known reputation of deceiving the counties and residents within, resulting in multimillion-dollar lawsuits, and an energy plant that's already contaminated the local streams. All of those proposed industries will not balance well with the current agricultural operations that are here, but there are plenty that would. So, I'm asking you today to deny the large subdivisions, at least until plans can be put in place to create a more positive and forward progression of growth in this county. With good industry, that'll bring in revenue to improve the infrastructure, pick up the slack for the school systems, and work in harmony with our farmers to preserve the agricultural roots and our peaceful way of life. Balance is possible with careful planning, and approving this large development or any others right now, I feel, would be a step in the wrong direction. And, you know, this is part, I didn't have this written down, but, you know, there's already a lot of land that's already on that intersection that's just sitting there that no one has done anything with that is commercial, and then they want to go ahead and rezone five more acres for that. I feel like there's a lot better way to do this and eventually, you know, come up with a better plan that, you know, we can't have a few more people move, or some more people move into the county, but the ones that want to enjoy the life that we live, where we're not all piled on top of each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay, if you'd like to speak, you'll raise your hand, come on up.
This microphone right where I need it, huh? Good to see y'all. I'm Holly Walker. I live at 5560 Highway 29, Norristown, Georgia. I don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but first thing, I don't, I don't know that I got it clear. Is this going to be rental or buy houses?
No questions right now.
Oh, we can't ask questions? Okay, that's just in my brain, though, you know? I got to get it all figured out. I appreciate this man coming and doing what he's doing, but I'm not far this. I believe that my, a lot of my priority is, what is it going to do to the schools? We haven't had a child in school since 1992. We pay, ugh, a lot of taxes, school taxes, and we're old. I don't know if you can notice it or not, but we're old people, you know? And, you know, if y'all, you bought gas lately? We can't even afford to buy gas. And the taxes are going to go up. If we can just settle it in there, and these people are renting, they're not paying taxes, I don't know how all this stuff works. I'm not asking all the questions, but, you know, like I said, we don't, we don't have a child in school for ever and ever. 72, 74 years old, okay? Anyway, we don't want to pay more taxes, okay? We have worked for what we have. We started our married life 50, gosh, four years ago, in a 10-by-50 trailer. Hey, that was good. I was poor, we was poor folks, you know? I was raised up in Red Hill, and the rest was a lot of poor folks. Anyway, but we was in a 10-by-50 trailer, but, you know, we wanted better. We worked hard, we worked for it. I don't mind paying taxes, but I don't want to pay somebody else's taxes too. Do y'all? Oh, that was a question, I'm sorry. But, I said, I know. But anyway, just, you know, the taxes is really something, it really does bother me. Like I said, we've worked hard, and we want to pay, I share. But we don't want to pay other people's share. We want them to share the load. And if you live here, you got kids in school, I'm sorry, you need to pay taxes. I'm sorry. That's just the way it is. Let's see if I've got anything else I want to say. I believe in everybody has equal rights for all, but if you want it, get out and work for it. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Okay, if you'd like to speak, if you'll raise your hand, we'll have you come up. And again, this is speaking against the application.
I'm Gary Hall, 150 Gary Hall Road. The people in Franklin County likes the way Franklin County is now. We know there's going to be growth, ain't no doubt about it. But, we can slow it down, son. Cornwall and Lebonia have already just about screwed the county over. There's about 1,000 homes, I'm pretty sure, that's on the map today to be built in this county. I think there's 150 in the county, the rest of them's in Lebonia and Cornwall. That's a new school already. Our schools are already full. And we just passed a sposh to build this last school, which is expensive, very expensive. So, it's going to be a while before we can even educate people. We don't have the infrastructure. I don't know what the new school, they spoke about on that day, I don't know if they did or not, but... We don't need any multifamily housing in this county in the current time. We just don't need it. It's for people that's working in Jackson County, up there where the battery plant is, Banks County. I want you to talk to people in Banks County, in Jackson County, and see what a mess they got up there. We don't need that here. If they come where they want to come, they'll be going to Commerce to house them. If they got the industry up there, and they give them all that free money to come up there, they need to house their own kids, because school education is going to be roughly, for this one outfit, $250 for an average house. That don't include your law enforcement, don't include your ambulance services, don't include your fire departments. That's just part of it. The added people on the road, it's not what we need. It's not what we need at all. And I hope that we will look over our zoning stuff, and for the current time, not allow any multifamily stuff, because if you didn't ride down Yen Street or ride to Manly Street over there in Cornwall, you ought to be able to see all you need to see. And we can come back later on. If we could, if we need multifamily, and we feel like we do later, after we've got some business here and some stuff that we think we need it, then we can use it. But in the meantime, we don't need it. I don't think, if any people's moved in this county recently, they don't want it, the people that's been here don't want it. And I hope that y'all, gentlemen, I don't think y'all have had any, too many people coming to you wanting multifamily stuff for people outside our county to try to screw our county up. That's what I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wong. Okay, if you'd like to speak against this application, if you'll raise your hand, come
I'm Randy Dudley, I live on 34 Garrison Road. I was born and raised in Gwinnett County. The reason I'm in here, or up here right now, is on the county of Gwinnett County. I don't want the growth here. That's the reason. I love it here the way it is. People that don't know what Gwinnett County and all the people around there, bumper to bumper, you can't even go nowhere without sitting there 30 minutes, go five miles down the road. I mean, it's ridiculous. And where I live over there is close to the truck stop. You go out there at 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock in the morning, and trucks getting on there, we're going to have one heck of a traffic down there if you let somebody put up a complex and everything. And I'm a builder too. I built, I used to build homes. And I built since 69, up to old 70, when I quit. So, I know what it is to make money, and I've done just like these people here are trying to do. I'd go out there and buy a piece of property and say anything I had to say to get the property approved to do what I wanted to do, just for the almighty dollar, and it's not worth it. That's all I got to say.
All right, thank you. Okay, if you'd like to speak against the application, if you'll raise your hand. Anyone else who would like to speak?
I will. I didn't really plan on speaking today. Stan Witsett, 88 Rocky Ford Road, Carlsville, Georgia. I've been living down here on Rocky Ford, where I've been living in Franklin County since July 18, 1971, but I've been living down on the Rock Ford Creek since 1979. And I can remember, when I first went down there, I had to pay to put on gravel, and I had to put the rock on the road, because it was, they just, there wasn't no way that my wife could get out and go to work. Now, they got a pay then. We had to have an 80-foot right-of-way when they built that road for Rocky Ford. And my cow pasture, they took 1,780-something feet, 40-foot wide off my cow pasture, and that's about four or five cows. And now, they're talking about setting these buildings back 10, 15 feet? I had to set my pasture fence back 40 feet for a pasture fence, not building. I tell you what needs to bother us and bother the whole United States and our whole country. I am from Texas, and this started back in 1954, 55. Mexicans, which I don't have nothing wrong with the Mexicans at all. They're some of the prettiest girls that there is, when they're half-mess and half-white. I used to kiss on them. I mean, they are sweet things.
Let's keep on track down this way.
But I'll tell you something, what the problem is, Texas and Arizona right now, it is wide open, and it ain't people coming here from Mexico. People, it's 165 countries. And if you ain't been out on the interstate lately, you don't know nothing about this. Charter buses on Interstate 85 every day, just go out there and park. White charter buses from Texas. You can turn on the television, look at the bus out in Texas, and then you can drive out on the interstate in a day or two, and you can see that bus go by here. Well, I want them to stop in Gainesville, or I want them to keep on going up Interstate 85, because these people are not Mexicans. We don't even know who they are. And the United States cannot exist without borders. And we're not going to do any better here in Franklin County. Build it, build these, all these kind of places, multi-structured homes, they will come. Build it, and they'll come. I guarantee it. And those white charter buses won't go on up the interstate, they'll stop in Franklin County and go Gainesville, maybe go to work in the poker business. Oh, Gainesville, that's a good example. I know some places over there. Multi-family places over there, that the beds never cool off. I mean, there's so many people living in there, want to come in, get out of bed, and none of them get in bed. And he gets on the... And he gets on the bus because the poultry companies and a whole lot of other industries are on the buses to pick them up and to drop them off. The bed never cools out, we don't need that in Franklin County. We don't need multifamily housing. There may be a time, like Mr. Hall said, 40 years from now, we may need multifamily housing. But it ain't no time soon. All they want from Atlanta is to make a dollar. Just like the steam plant that was fixing to come, they wanted to make money and hoop on up.
I might cut you off there, thank you, Mr. Witsett. Okay, anyone else want to speak? Come on.
My name is Lynn Riley, I live on 234 Mountain View Road, Carinsville, Georgia, which is on Highway 51, we're about two miles from the proposed multifamily units. And my concern is, there is a four-way stop there right now. And it's, many times has the stop sign been run over? It's just a very bad traffic area there now. So, you know, DOT, are they going to do something about this? Are they going to put a four-way, you know, light there? So traffic is a big issue on that corner. Also, there's a concern with the fire department. We've got volunteer fire departments all around us, but are they going to be able to, you know, take care of this, all these people in this housing complexes? My concern is, you know, is this going to be affordable for the people that actually need homes here in Franklin County? I just met a woman who works, she's a single lady, and she works at Home Depot, and she can't find a place to live that's affordable for her. So that's my concern, is the DOT, the fire department, and the sheriff's office, are they going to be able to handle this big units that are going to go there, or propose to go there? So I hope that you guys, I'm not against growth. We've had some beautiful homes that have been down towards 106 on 51, and they're beautiful, but they're on bigger lots, and they're there for families. It's a nice home for a family on a big lot. And I'm all for that, but I'm not for multi-family units. And I hope that you guys will deny this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roll. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is John Robertson, I live at 1637 McFarland Bridge Road. We moved here 2014 from Delana to Georgia. We lived on Long Ranch Road. Took me about five or 10 minutes just to come out of my driveway, the traffic got so bad. We bought this property in '06, we bought it to retire and live a normal life of some kind. Like I said, we moved here in 2015. We own 60 acres. Here in the past two years, a lot of property is sold up and down our road. Most of the people that's moved in here have come from Jackson County, some from Gwinnett County, and still work in Gwinnett County and Jackson County. Just like what they said a while ago, where are these people going to live at? Where are they going to work at? Where are they going to eat at? We have to go to the code and eat, to go to the grocery store, go out and eat. Thank God they built the Longhorns, it's worth the crap, you know, in Livonia. We do these things because we like being in the middle of nowhere. We love this county. At one time, when we first moved here in '06, we had 10 cars that went by our driveway, five in the morning and five in the afternoon. You know, it's got to where now, it's a cutoff. You know, they come from 320 to 198. We like this place, we have no intentions of leaving. You have to bury me out there on my farm because that's where I'm going to die and go wherever I'm going to go. I think I'm going to go to heaven, that's what my intentions are. We don't need, you know, I lived in Gwinnett County, and same way, we had multi-houses around. It brings crime, police, county catch-up, and like I said, what are we going to do with the fire department? Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak, if you'll raise your hand?
My name is Zachary Seers, I live at 1234 Beatty Road, Martin, Georgia. And I'm opposing for any type of this multifamily dwellings that we have. I started my career as a professional firefighter back in 1999 with Hall County. So roughly 23 years ago, Hall County was as rural as Franklin County is today. And we have a diamond here in Franklin County. It's being polished and sparkled, we're starting to put the cobbleback around it. And I just want to throw some numbers out there, Ed, we keep buried fire and EMS. This is what's going to be proposed for our budget this year at Hall County. Our landmass is roughly 150 square miles difference between the two counties. We operate 16 fire stations, 18 ACLS ambulances, a full-time training staff. Our fire budget alone is $31,556. I'm sorry, $31,556, fire budget. Our EMS budget is $10,819. Our training budget is $360, $360,278. So a total of roughly $43 million for public safety, and that's just fire and EMS. This is not counting your law enforcement, your code enforcement, because we're talking about bringing dogs. So our code enforcement guys will be wearing it out. This is the stuff I see every day, this is real world. I oppose, people got to have a place to live. But when I was born and raised in this county, I wanted to invest in this county, so I bought multiple acres for my family to enjoy, for me to enjoy, to carry on my business of agriculture, and also do a job that I love. Yeah, I had to drive an hour and a half to get there, that's my choice. But I never go to work every third day, I go to something I love. So it's not a job. And you're not going to have that passion with these people that's going to live in a multifamily dwelling, working at the battery plant. So I like, what's my concern to oppose this? We've got plenty of time, there's no rush, we've already put a moratorium in place, let's do our homework, let's make our zoning regulations right. And I'm concerned because we was asking for variances. When I come to these meetings, used to be on the plan in the zoning board, we had people ask for variance for poultry farms. We didn't give them that variance, it was written in black and white. So, but I would go to some other chicken house, and I would look out in my backyard and bust a two-story multifamily dwellers. I would like for you to consider to oppose this.
Thank you, Ms. Roll. I mean, Mr. Seers, right there. Anyone like to speak against?
My name is Martin Gibson, I live at 18240 Highway 59 in Carinsville. I hadn't planned to say anything tonight, but I just want to say that the name of their development is very interesting, Corridor Development. Why is that? I haven't researched their company, but I bet if I did, I'd find out that the majority of their properties and the majority of their developments are occurring along Interstate 85, which is a corridor that splits our county virtually in half. I'm going on a limb and say that probably the worst thing that ever happened to this county is the construction of that interstate. It brings nothing to us, it carries nothing from us. It's just a corridor to bring in any and everything that wants to dump on our county. Why? Because we're a low-paced, slow-paced, beautiful place to be. Everybody wants to be here. Everybody can't afford to be here on their own. But they can come to a place or a development like this and live off our backs, who have been here virtually all our lives, paying exorbitant amount of county and property taxes. That's why they want to be here. They're not interested in us as residents and citizens of this county. They want to develop this, make the big bucks, and move on up the corridor. I strongly suggest you consider reading what you received tonight and reject this application.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Okay, if you'd like to speak, if you'll raise your hand?
My name is Shirley Robertson, and I live at 1637 McFarland Bridge Road. One thing that really bothers me as I listen tonight about the components of this development, they're asking for all these compromises. When we built our house and we moved, we weren't given any compromises. This plan started out at nine houses or nine units per building. They're willing to back it down. You know, our comprehensive plan is a work in progress. And right now, we need to be very careful how we adhere to that plan. Just because it says eight units per house doesn't, or per acre, doesn't mean that we really need to do that. And obviously, with all these people here and all the probably calls you've gotten and responses you've heard, this is not something that we're ready for. So we're asking that you really, really think about what you're doing to the rest of the county. There are so many trucks through that intersection, and they don't stop when they pull out. We drive a Volkswagen most of the time, and there've been many times that those truckers don't see us. They don't stop, they just come up. And everybody's got a point. The people who do live in this complex are going to leave us. They're not going to stay and add anything to our county. And one question that seemed to, I guess, the gentleman who spoke hesitated, is this going to be rental or purchase? And he said, well, we haven't decided that yet. I think we really know, need to know an answer to that question before we even consider any development in that particular area. And I ask that you just really think about what you're doing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roll. If you'd like to speak, if you'll raise your hand?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name's Lori Huster, and I live at 2112 Highway 145. I grew up in Atlanta, I grew up in DeKalb County. I've lived my whole life in Atlanta. I've lived in apartments, I've owned homes. I'm one of eight kids, I was raised in DeKalb County. Do you know back in the 80s, we were able to drive to Shepherd Dairy and get our milk? Like even in the late 80s, there was a dairy. Do you know there's not one family farm left in DeKalb County? I learned to fly, I'm a pilot. I have flown out of Peachtree Cab Airport, I've flown out of Lawrenceville, I've flown out of Franklin County. When I learned to fly in 1990, we would practice, we'd go to the practice area. The practice area was Gwinnett, where the mall is now. I'd like to take any single one of you right now for an airplane ride, if you're willing to trust me and get in the airplane with me, and I'd like to show you what urban sprawl looks like. Because I think what we're witnessing is the start of urban sprawl in Franklin County. They use phrases like "smart growth" in Atlanta. We escaped, Rob and I feel like we were, we talked about it. We bought land in Franklin County three years ago, we've been living here for two. I came before you in December requesting a conditional use permit for our business because we are setting roots in Franklin County. We looked for many years trying to find where we were going to go because we knew that Atlanta was not the place for us. It did not align with our values. I have two sisters with farms out here on the border of Franklin and Madison County, and they said, "Come to Franklin County," because Franklin County is about faith, family, and farming. And that's what we wanted. Do you really think packing people in to a multi-use development, even at the interstate? Do you really think that's smart? Do you think that's good for the children that are going to grow up? I bet every single one of you grew up out in the country and you ran around and you were a free-range kid. They're going to sell these developments to you because I lived it. I've been through zoning in Atlanta, I've seen what Atlanta has, what they've done to Atlanta. Do you really think that pickleball and a swimming pool and a dog park? Like, do you really think that that, I mean, it sounds great, it's just part of their sales pitch. And I've lived in these places. I'm not going to lie to you. When we came here two years ago, I was struggling. I was saying, "Where's my Publix, where's my Target?" I had a Publix and a Target, three Starbucks within a mile of where I lived in Decatur. And my sister said, "You better, you better, you better work through that withdrawal." And I'm here to tell you guys that life, I feel like I escaped something. When I go back to Atlanta now, I say, "Wow, we were like fish in a fishbowl." It's like this diseased, cancerous fishbowl. Life is good out here. I can see the stars, I couldn't see them in Atlanta. The air quality's good, there's no light pollution. When I go flying, Gwinnett County, do you think there are any farms left in Gwinnett County? How about Jackson and Base? Look at what's happening as Atlanta grows. I'd like for you guys to see what it looks like when you look outside of an airplane and you see the concrete and the pavement and the rooftops. What you have is a gem. And it's not a rush, like the other gentleman said. You can say no, they're going to keep coming. Corridor development, they're not going to stop. They're going to keep coming, and they're going to keep coming, and we pray for you guys. Because unless you've lived it like we've lived it, and we feel like we've escaped out here to a place that aligns with our values, you just can't know. And so I guess what I wanted to say tonight is, I don't want to repeat what others have said, but the perspective that I have is, you're studying precedent if you approve it. And then what's going to happen is, little by little, it's going to creep and it's going to creep and there's going to be pressure on you guys, and there's going to be lawsuits. It's like, are you guys faith, family, and farming or not? Is agriculture? I understand that, you know, I've read the comprehensive plan multiple times. I came before you with the permit that you guys approved, and we're grateful for that. But Rob and I, we could pack up tomorrow, list our property, and be out of here like that. But these people in this room, there's multiple generations of people in this community, and they can't pack up and move like we can. I came to your community and I am trying to adjust.
Well, I might have to cut you off, thank you, appreciate it. Okay, anyone like to speak, if you'll raise your hand? Anyone else?
Hopefully, I'm not going to extend this meeting unnecessarily. My name's Thomas Gift, 1538 Highway 145 in Oyster. Hopefully, this isn't redundant with what other people have said, but when a property development concept comes before you and the first thing they're asking for is a fistful of variances, that really strongly suggests that they're trying to push the parcel into development that it can't accommodate. And they have accommodated, they've adjusted their request in response to what Mr. DeLozier requested, but they're still pushing for a little bit more than anybody in the county has gotten. And that seems to raise a real red flag. Others have mentioned the traffic issues, their state highways. I'm not into development enough to know if that's a state problem or a county problem, but the two lanes and stop signs aren't going to get it done if these people move into the area. And so that, that plus the additional schools, plus the additional EMT unit, any property gain or property tax gain that would come from development parcel would start to bleed away because the additional infrastructure would be needed to support the development. So it just, that with all the variances, if they can't make it work with the zoning ordinances as they exist, it kind of suggests it's trying to push it too hard to do something that it can't do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anyone like to speak, if you'll raise your hand?
My name is Bonnie Gibson, I live at 1824 Highway 59. We live approximately two miles from this proposed development. And my late husband and I moved on this property in 1962. Our two children were educated in Franklin County schools. And there has already been said that traffic by our residents is unreal with all those trucks back and forth to, up to the power plant. And I'm also bothered by the noise at night on a late at night. And I'm also bothered by the noise at night when I'm laying down to go to sleep. We can hear the motors or whatever it is up there running and it's an aggravation. I've listened intently tonight. I've heard taxes mentioned, but I have not heard anyone say anything about taxes as they pertain to senior citizens. And I don't know if everyone's tax bill is like ours or not, but when you get it and look at it, you pay more school tax than you do property tax. And it's going to overload the wagon one of these days. And it's like Mr. Whitson, I believe, said, "If you build it, they will come." And they will, their children will come with them. I can't understand how this county can forego and pay any more school tax than what we're paying. And our facilities are already at full capacity. I ask that you consider the amount of school taxes and what have you that you will be forwarding to the senior citizens as you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitson. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak? If you'll raise your hand. Anyone else want to speak against the application?
Kyle Westbrook, 1478 Cromer Ridge Road, Royston, Georgia. I'd just like to echo what everybody else has kind of said, but give a different perspective in a way. You know, there's countless people that's not here tonight that I've talked to that are totally against a development like this. Franklin County, you know, we have 85 running right through the middle of our county. They're going to come, they're going to keep coming for rezone and try everything they can. But I feel like the citizens of this county should have to say so in what we allow in our county. You know, there was a magazine come out about the county this week. Franklin County is number one in poultry production. I believe, number three in beef cattle production. When you start allowing developments like this, they're going to come one after the other. And our agriculture will be gone. You know, I didn't want to speak tonight. I've got two and a half hour drive after I leave here to Warner Road. But it's very important to me just to let you all know the way I feel and countless other citizens feel. And I would ask that you deny this. That's about all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Would anyone else like to speak? Raise your hand. Anyone want to speak against? Okay. At this time, we're going to ask the applicants to come forward again and offer a summary statement and rebuttal. And afterwards, the commissioners will ask questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I'll try to touch on some of those comments that we heard. I think first to start off is some of the kind of more detailed or specific questions. So, as far as DOT goes and site access configuration, now, we're located on two state routes, Highway 51 and Highway 59. So, state DOT plays a role here in determining exactly where the access points go, what the configuration of those access points is going to be. If the development were approved or any connection to a state road, the state DOT determines how that connection goes. We will get to go to GDOT and tell them where the access driver is going to go, how they're going to be configured. We can make suggestions and tell them what we think is good. But state DOT absolutely makes really the final decision there. Also, you know, we heard a concern about traffic and the function of that intersection, you know, stop sign control, four-way stop intersection there on Highway 51 and Highway 59. And we understand that, you know, as that intersection, as that activity center continues to grow, including if the proposed development were approved, that there's going to be increased, you know, strain on that. And so, we have nothing against, you know, making a contribution to helping that intersection, you know, improve. Whether that is the traffic light, whether that's, you know, us giving up some right-ofway on Highway 51 or 59 to help make that function better, have a better design, we're more than open to those conversations. There's things that we can do to, you know, help alleviate some of the potential negative impacts there. And we think it's fair that, you know, we make a contribution and pay our fair share to help address impacts that the proposed development would bring. Additionally, we mentioned this at the Planning Commission public hearing, but we're also open to potentially some impact fees. Franklin County doesn't have an impact fee ordinance right now, but this is something we've discussed a lot internally. And I mentioned at the Planning Commission public hearing that we'd be open to conversations about a contribution of, I think it was $1,500 or $2,000 per unit that you could have pulled when there's a CO or a building permit, you know, whatever the case may be. But that would help provide pretty quick relief, pretty quick, you know, contribution to the county coffers as it's working on other infrastructure improvements, capital improvements, things of that nature. That could give some flexibility there on the county side. And tied to that is the phase of this project. You know, we would not come in and start the construction of all homes at the exact same time. They are metered out over time. There's flow to them. So, again, just to try to set forth a hypothetical timeline, you know, let's say it was approved, there's probably an 18-month development permitting and design phase of the project where we get our plans together and submit for land disturbance permit, building permits and all those things. But then, homes will be, you know, built over time from there. So, I think ultimately, you're probably looking at a, you know, two to three year, probably at least, development timeline. So, it wouldn't necessarily be all units coming online at the exact same time. That can help, you know, reduce the immediate impact. You know, the proposed homes are not designed to be, they're not intended to be, and it's not our plan to come in and build in the absolute cheapest possible way, being quality homes with long-term materials, brick, stone, fiber cement, hardy board, tight materials that you see in common new residential constructions. But they're meant to be attainable. You know, you can hear terms of affordable housing or workforce housing. You know, what does all that mean? These are, these are homes that, you know, folks who work for a living can afford. You know, not everybody can afford the big, you know, estate lot, the big home on an estate lot. Some people like to have this type of housing to suit their demands. You know, I know, I certainly am sensitive to folks having a preference for, you know, big house and a large lot. But not everybody, you know, has those same preferences. And that's just, you know, not me personally saying that. Those are components of the comprehensive plan where it talks about a need for housing diversity. And so, that ties to what I mentioned in my presentation about, you know, economic development purposes. And so, you know, businesses, I'm sure you've heard, businesses chase the rooftops. You know, they don't, they don't just go build a Longhorn steakhouse, you know, surrounded by nothing. They build it where there's rooftops. They build it where there's people that can conveniently access it. And those types of principles are reflected in the comp plan. So, under Franklin County, Opportunities, Strong Support for Economic Development. Cited Issues, Workforce Development is Critical for the Future. Needs and Opportunities, Evolving Housing Demands, Need for More Quality Workforce Housing and Senior Living. And I think the proposed development would provide those things. It would speak to those things. It would, one, immediately, you know, provide housing that's in demand and provide diversification of housing. Only 0.8% of housing, according to the comp plan, is townhomes right now. But just to try to lay out, for whatever this is worth, our sort of internal process for, you know, finding, you know, properties that could potentially be developed and building homes on them. It starts with internal research and looking at, you know, various jurisdictions. So, it starts with, okay, does, you know, what does the zoning ordinance say? Does the zoning ordinance have a district that would accommodate townhomes? Franklin County does. What does the comp plan say? Does the comp plan, you know, accommodate or encourage this type of development? We look at the comp plan and our read of it at least is, yes, in certain areas. Not everywhere. But in certain targeted areas in those gateway corridor character areas, it does accommodate more intense development. And then, we go and look for a piece of property that, now that we know there's a zoning ordinance that accommodates the use, there's a comprehensive plan that encourages it, in general locations, we say, "Okay, where's a property that we can find that's got good convenient access to an interstate? Okay, we're a thousand feet from Interstate 85." We find a property that's got access to a major road, state highway, we've got two. You know, is there a commercial nearby? Yes. There's room for more, too, specifically at this intersection. So, we think that the proposed development is compatible with those general housing policies. The subject property is an appropriate location for that type of development, given the surrounding commercial areas, its proximity to 85. This would be an absolute, you know, I think, different situation if we were, you know, way off, miles and miles away from 85 and in more, you know, clearly, purely even agricultural areas. I probably wouldn't be here. But where we've got this subject property a thousand feet from the interstate, the intersection of two state highways, zoning ordinance that has a district that allows it, the comp plan that encourages it, would respectfully submit to that the subject property is an appropriate location and the proposed development is appropriate, given those factors I've mentioned. So, thank you again very much for your time and consideration. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay. We'll start off, we're just going to go one at a time and we go back and forth. Mr. Wester, do you have questions?
I do have the question on, is this going to be townhomes for sale or is this going to be grant? Or, you know, how are we going to do this?
Yes, sir. So, I was asked that question at Planning Commission and I'll provide the same answer. It's really, we don't know right now. We're absolutely considering the option for rental. I know that there's a lot of concern about that type of ownership structure. That's certainly a detailed conversation. There's a lot of components to that. But we also think this would be a great location for a for-sale, fee simple community. You know, I think there are, you know, rental gets a bad rap in a lot of ways. I will say that with a rental community, there's a lot more control that a single property owner has and through that single property owner, county, the local government has at enforcing their code. It's not just some homeowner, you know, rapping on their door and sending them citations. It's a large corporate owner. You know, these, for a community of this number of units, it's usually owned not by, you know, a mom and pop investor. There's usually an entity that owns it that has significant capital to keep maintenance and standards very high. So, for example, the painting of the homes occurs on a more rigid timeline. It's not up to a homeowner whether they think it's time to paint or not. You know, the single owner paints on a much tighter maintenance schedule. Landscaping is another one where, in a lot of subdivisions, there's general rules about you need to keep grass cut to a certain extent and things like that. But in a rental community, it's usually one person paying the landscaping bill. And they do a rotation through the subdivision. All the grass gets cut at once. Trees get trimmed. Pine straw gets put down. You don't have to rely on individual homeowners to do those things. There's one, single management company that handles all of that. There's oftentimes in those communities also, you know, there's a two-tiered regulation structure, right? So, a lot of times, there's still a overall, you know, covenants, property covenants that govern the property in the deed records and all that, you know, it gets recorded like a typical homeowner's association would. But then also, these are subject to lease agreements, which can be more stringent, more strict on how they regulate the community than just a HOA can be. Most HOAs couldn't get away with requirements that said, you know, "No parties." Or, "You need to park in your garage." You know, "Get to use your garage for storage." "We want to keep our streets. We want to keep our driveways clean." And so, there's oftentimes, you know, those types of restrictions and requirements. So, there's, there's a lot of flexibility that's given on the management and regulation side and even opportunities to be more strict than a typical HOA would be. But the short answer is, we'd be more than happy to have, you know, a detailed discussion about that if there's concerns about that. But as of this time, we just, at least internally, we haven't made a firm decision either way. We're trying, you know, looking at the market and, you know, there's, you know, different markets both are very strong right now, but just different markets for how that community set up.
Do you know ballpark figure what you're looking at, price-wise to rent or price-wise to sale?
So, what, so ballpark, right? So, you know, there's with an 18-month development and engineering timeline, construction costs are crazy right now. There's a lot of fluctuation. They're going up, so it's hard to pinpoint it at a certain point in time. But typically, what you'll see is a monthly rent is higher than what the mortgage would be on that same unit. It's not, it's not a community for people that rent because they have to. It's folks that like the flexibility, they like the freedom that rental provides in a, you know, a home type that they want. They want the townhome, they want a little more space, they don't want an apartment. But they like the idea of somebody else cutting on the grass, somebody else fixing the roof, somebody else painting the house. "My dishwasher's broken. I don't have to go, you know, figure that out my own. I call a landlord and they come fix it." So, it's not a scenario where it's people's last resort and they're moving here because they can't afford to buy. It's people that pay a premium, you know, it's renters by choice in these types of communities. So, short answer is, it would be comparative to, if not exceeding, what a mortgage would be. And honestly, at the risk of hazarding a guess, I mean, I think if you were to try to say, "Okay, well, what would be the, a sales price if they were sold to individual homeowners?" And again, I'm hazering a guess, but trying to give you a ballpark, I would think high two is you'd probably be.
Okay. Mr. Wester, anything else? Okay. Mr. Foster.
On the commercial property, y'all going to build this gas station in mini warehouses or y'all going to try to market it and for somebody else to come build that there?
So, I think we'd be open to either case. I think we'd be prepared to, you know, in it, it works kind of together, right? So, you know, it's not a commercial venture that we'd probably undertake in a vacuum on its own. But, you know, I think there'd be an opportunity, a lot of times you'll have someone who's in the market for a five-acre commercial piece. "I want to buy it. I want to build it, you know, the way that I want it." There's also, we think, a spec market, too. So, I think either case would be realistic there.
Okay. As far as like contractors doing this work, you know, the paving, the building, and the suppliers, do you plan to use local people for that or if it was approved, local people or?
I mean, there's certainly efficiencies there, you know? And that's our preference. And that's what Corridor tries to do when they have a new project, they try to use, you know, it's easier when your contractor's located a mile away than 20 miles away. More responsive, the closer to the job site, they pass it on the way to church or, you know, up the road and they see it, it's closer monitored. So, absolutely, it's, we try to use local contractors, local materials to, as much as we can because there's an efficiency there.
Yeah, there's, all I got. Mr. Franklin?
Any questions that you have?
We'll try this. If Commissioner Swales is with us, Commissioner Swales, do you have questions?
I'm here, obviously.
Okay. Can you just very briefly go back over? We want to make sure we have a clear idea of what you said would be acceptable as far as variances, because that gets kind of confusing, is what the original plan was, what staff recommended, and then what you said. So, can you just go over those one by one so we've got that in front of us?
Yes, sir. So, one of the variances we asked for was to increase the density from eight to 8.4. We can agree to denial of that variance. We asked for the variance to allow a maximum of six units per building. And that would be our request tonight. For the front setback, we're requesting a minimum of 25 feet. For the side setback, we're requesting a minimum of 10 feet. And for the rear setback, we're requesting a minimum of 30 feet.
All right. So, you're okay if we deny, or you find acceptable if we deny the variance on density?
Yes, sir.
And you, for the maximum number of units per building, you are requesting six?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And for the front setback, a minimum of 25 feet?
Yes, sir.
Side, minimum of 10 feet?
Yes, sir.
And rear, minimum of 30 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Commissioners, do you have any other questions? Okay. Thank you. We'll make a decision at the regular board meeting that follows this hearing and you're welcome to remain for that meeting. Thank you. Last two items on the agenda. Last two items on the agenda include requests to rezone property and obtain a variance, and these two items are all part of the same application and will also be heard together. Three D is Ridgeline Planning Incorporated, one ninety-six, Bel Air Court, Winder, Georgia, three oh six eight zero, has filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential, single-family on an approximately twenty-three-point-nine-nine acre tract of land located on State Route three twenty-six and further identified as tax parcel number zero-one-four, I'm sorry, zero-one-four dash zero-four-five C. And then, three E, Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated, has also filed a variance application for an increase in panhandle length on a flag lot on an approximately twenty-three-point-nine-nine acre tract of land located on State Route three twenty-six and further identified as tax parcel number zero-one-four dash zero-four-five C. So, at this time, we're gonna ask our planning director, Mr. Delosier, to come and summarize that application for the board.
Yes, sir. Good evening again, gentlemen. As you stated, Ridgeline Planning has applied for an application to rezone a tract of land identified as tax parcel number zero-one-four zero-four-five C, from ag-intensive to residential, single-family. The intent is to build a ten lot subdivision, ten individual, single-family homes on the twenty-three-point-nine-nine acre tract. They are requesting a variance to, for an increase in the length of a panhandle lot. Y'all have the site plan before you. Panhandle is the long, narrow strip that touches Highway three twenty-six to access some of those back lots. The Planning Commission's recommendation was to table this. They were pending some more information that they wanted to review from flood, plane question, and some soil erosion control issues. The applicant has done some work between those two meetings, between the Planning Commission meeting and this meeting to provide that information. I'm okay with upholding the Planning Commission's recommendation that they would, just so that they have the opportunity to review all the information that y'all have for y'all tonight, and maybe if there's any other conditions or anything they would like to add to it.
So, they voted to table the matter?
Their recommendation was to table it, yes.
Is, I'll ask Mr. Samuel, so does it, should it still properly come before us tonight, or should?
So, if it was, it was, if it was their recommendation, they tabled it.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay, I get you. I want to clarify that. Thank you. All right. At this time, we're gonna ask the applicants to come forward and speak on behalf of their application.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chairman, Holpersinger, Ridgeline Land Planning, one ninety-six, Bel Air Court, Winder, Georgia. And our application is fairly simple, and I'll be as brief as I can, because I know we're well on, long on time. But we are requesting to rezone the twenty-three-point-nine-nine acres from ag-intensive to residential, single-family for ten lots, where that's average of two-point-three units in that, I mean, two-point-three acres per lot, so our smallest lot, per code, acre and a half because it's well and septic. And we have, I think, four or five lots of that size, and the rest of them are much larger than that. Other than that, excuse me, there's not really anything more I need to cover as far as the actual plan itself. But Planning Commission had a concern about, because one of the people in opposition brought up concerns about flooding, and I'd just like to point out that our property's about, I think, you've got the documents that I've put together, and I actually quit mapping when I ran out of room on three USGS squad maps. From the ridge top above our site, through our site to that property, there's about sixty-five acres of drainage basin there. But what the proposition failed to tell Planning Commission is that the Hudson River flows through the back of their property, so their whole rear property line is the Hudson River. And if you look at the sheet I put together that you have, drainage basin from that property up is eighty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety acres. So, we're a very insignificant area of drainage that flows through that property, and if we paved that entire site, I don't think you'd notice any difference in the flood plain because of the amount of drains into, through the Hudson River, through the back of that property. So, I think the flooding concerns are that someone purchased a piece of property that has flood plain on it, which, what the flood maps are for is to show property that floods and where it floods and how it floods. So, that's really all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'll turn off the timer.
Thank you. We'll do questions at the end. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna call one at a time for those who wish to speak in favor of this application, so we ask that you raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Also, remember, when you come up, as before, give your name and address, and we'll have a timer visible, so you can pace your remarks to five minutes or less. Remember, all comments must only pertain to this application. So, anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application, if you raise your hand, we'll have you come up. Anyone who'd like to speak in favor. One more time, if you'd like to speak in favor of this application, raise your hand. Okay. At this time, we'll call for, one at a time, for those who wish to speak against this application. Again, raise your hand and wait to be recognized. So, if you'd like to speak against this application, if you raise your hand, we'll have you come forward. And remember, start with your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Sundon, one-twenty-five Riverbend Road Commerce. I have some pictures that I'd like to give you.
Thank you.
I would like to thank you for the opportunity for us to express our opinion and concerns about this proposed development. Our property joins this property, and is located directly downhill from the property. As you can see in the photos taken after a rain, the first three pages is walking through our property back to this property. And you can see the erosion and flooding we get after every single rain. Where their figures came from, that there's no flooding, I don't have any of that, we see it all the time. The last two pages is standing on the back of our property, looking up this property. As you can see, it's a continuous hill from the back of our property and our neighbor's property all the way to the top. We have a great concern for water runoff coming through our land. Right now, this property has short grass and weeds, and we have an erosion problem, as you can see. We moved to this location thirty-three years ago. This twenty-four acres was a dense wooded area. We've never had any problem with water drainage. This land was cleared many years ago and caused a severe water problem. It was actually like rapids running down through these valleys there. Franklin County had come up several times to repair the washdown road. Then this property was planted with crops, and the problem went away, didn't have a water problem. Then the crops were cut, and we had the water problem again. Not as severe as when it was barren land, and they cleared it off, and it ended up being a cycle. Painted crops, no problem. Crops cut, back to the problem. But it was manageable because the crops were there longer than they were not. Crops have not been planted there in a while now, unless the pictures you have. It has gotten so bad that water stands around the base of our trees. One tree came down and took out a storage shed. That tree fell against another tree that fell across the power line and toppled up the tunnel pole, or power pole. All of this within sixty feet of our house. Some of our trees are probably a hundred-and-twenty foot tall, that could more than reach our house if water is standing around the root system, as you can see in the picture. It's my understanding that this subdivision will have stick-built houses, gravel driveways, and of course, lawns planted around the houses. When the grave is land for foundations and driveways, we're gonna be facing a severe problem again, just like we did when they cleared the land. Are they gonna be required to put up a silk screen or something to slow this water down? I'm sure before long, the homeowners will be paving the driveways. Ten driveways, ten feet wide, that's a hundred-foot pavement. Now, where is that water gonna go?
Down through our land.
Making its way to the river. Don't get me wrong, I'm not against progress. Progress could be good if it's planned properly, but you have to give considerations to surrounding land. I believe someone needs to do a study over there about this drainage problem, a retention pond, or something. But the question comes up, who's gonna maintain that? Franklin County? HOA? I don't know.
Okay. I'll have to cut you off there, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to speak against this application, if you raise your hand, come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is James Fraburn. Home seventeen and forty-five Riverbend Road. They're both adjacent to where this guy is proposing putting up this subdivision. I'll start out with saying I drive four hours a day, I work in Atlanta. I moved from Atlanta to here. I have gradually, I lived in Gwinnett County, I'm a builder, my dad was a builder. I know exactly how this works. They do understand there's a water problem there. Like you said, before the trees were cut down, we didn't have the flooding. As soon as the trees were cut down, we started getting flooded out. They started back growing stuff on it a couple of years ago, got down a little bit, but it's, I mean, it's flooding some of my neighbors out now. Now, you're gonna put ten houses, ten roofs, ten driveways. Don't let these guys tell you there's not gonna be driveways. They keep trying to say there's gonna be gravel. When you put up a three, a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and that's what they're gonna run, don't say it's not gonna be the mid-two hundreds. They say that so that you think that people in our community can afford it. But like I said, I've been a builder my whole life. We have, we set prices, and then they go up immediately. And the way prices are right now, there's no telling how much a house, two acre, you know, with three acres, is gonna cost. They're gonna put driveways in that place, and it's gonna flood my neighbors out. It doesn't get me as bad as my neighbors, to be honest. I got about an acre and a half that gets flooded hard, and I've got six acres total there. We've had two other homesteads come to that property and try to set up, and they had to leave. They put up a home and tore it down because they couldn't find water. Now, we're gonna have ten homes come in and drill wells, and we're gonna start funneling our water into that? What's that gonna do to all my neighbors? What's that gonna do to me? He's talking about the rivers causing the flooding problems. The river's on the other side of the street. We've never had any problem from the river. The people, I know plenty of people live on the other side of the street that don't have problems from flooding from the river. The flooding problem we're having is from this hill. It always has been. And the builders can do stuff, I mean, there's retaining, you can put up retaining ponds, I know that's expensive, but there's stuff they can do to help ease our concerns. And without bringing in water, the well, it may decimate everybody in that community. And it's already been said redundantly, firefighters. We've got a volunteer fire department out there. We don't have any fire hydrants very close. So, you're looking at bringing in a truck if something happens and fighting a fire with basically a backyard truck on a four-hundred-thousand-dollar home. And it just doesn't make any sense to me why we're slamming these in here and not really looking at the rest of the community to see what we can do to help them. Like I said, I've been here for almost twenty years, I built another house here, I did it by all the rules, and I think it's great that we're gonna do some kind of growth, but you guys have all the power. You can help protect the residents that are already here. And if they're gonna let them build, at least make it so that the other residents can feel good about what they're doing. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. If you'd like to speak against, come on up.
My name is Lisa Russel, and I live at three sixty Riverbend Road. And my first question is, why are they asking for a variance for panhandle driveways on this piece of property in the first place that is not suitable for ten homes unless there was a lot to be done with the topography? Because I live on Riverbend Road, right downstream from the property. I can testify as to where the water is coming from. There is a lot of rock underneath the property, and it is coming from across the street also underneath the two tubes where Highway three twenty-six is built up, at least by heat. There's water coming underneath there. There's water coming from the grade that's running down grade into Gary Sundon's property. And if you go out walking, then you will see the gully trenches down there, and where they put their soil perfect test holes for the homes that they want to be down on this low-lying end of the property. Nobody should have to have a house or a septic system on that low-lying part of the property. It just doesn't make sense. The panhandle driveways, why should they have panhandle driveways going out to Highway three twenty-six when they're asking for a change in zoning in the first place? I mean, that doesn't even make sense to the people who are gonna be moving into those houses. You're gonna have houses behind the front houses, who, the front of them is gonna be facing the rear yards and driveways running through that. They should provide a road into that property, take care of the drainage problem, put a lagoon in, put a buffer zone in from the chicken trucks that are going to be coming across the street because the property was annexed by Banks County and has already been approved for chicken houses. So, they're gonna have that with all those panhandle driveways. Their houses should be at or above street level, because that property, if you go out and walk on and see the way it is configured with the topography, the way it is, it is not a smart development for ten homes. Riverbend Road is river property. I have a lot of unbuildable land on my property, as do all of my neighbors. There is nothing different or unusual about this property requiring any kind of variance. They're just asking for permission because they are a builder, you know, and they, they're going to create a situation that isn't gonna be a good subdivision for those people to live in, according to the plan that they have with the panhandle driveways. I don't think it meets the criteria for the variance. And I think that they should have a responsibility to the residents who already live there, to the future people coming in to have a desirable living situation. I feel the plan that they have set out is just creating a nuisance for everybody. And I don't think that they should have approval for this variance because they are a builder. And that's it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anyone who'd like to speak against this application, if you'll raise your hand.
Yes, Gary Hall. One fifty, Gary Hall Road. This piece of property, I'll stand behind what these people said, they've all, they all told the truth about it. The land across the road has already been approved for chicken houses. That's the way it is, that's for Banks County. I don't really feel that we should give them a variance. And I've sit on a zoning board, we have our own people that live here all their life come before us to give them a variance, and that's a good thing. It's tough, some of them get it, and sometimes they don't get it. We won't let somebody come in and give them a variance to not give us any benefit. They don't live here. People that live here and have lived here for their life, they deserve a variance a lot of times. lot of times, and sometimes they don't get it. And people here selling property to their own kinfolk. We've made them move property lines, and it shouldn't happen that way. We need to take care of our own people. So I think y'all should really think about it. Land does not lay good. And I know if it followed within the criteria, you can't be against it, but we don't need to give any variances to help it out.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else who would like to speak against this application, if you'll raise your hand? Anyone who'd like to speak against? Okay, this time we're going to ask the applicants to come forward again and offer a summary statement and rebuttal, and then afterward commissioners can ask questions.
Thank you, Chairman. So I'll just address a couple of things that were brought up in this thought process that we don't look right or the layout's weird, or why don't they just put a road in the middle and cut lots off? And we could actually get more lots that way to that. But all these concerns here about runoff and stormwater, so that's something that would definitely increase if we put a new road in and it'd also create more infrastructure for the county to maintain when we dedicate that road to you. So the request was to do panhandle lots where it's allowed in code. We're only asking for a variance. There's actually only like two that we need the variance for to be up to five hundred forty feet. So we're not asking for a reduction in lot size. We're actually meeting the requirement for lot sizes within the code. It's just those two panhandle links to help us out on a couple of driveways for the lots and help spread the plots of these houses out over the property. And then as far as them being in front and behind each other, I mean, we have proposed this at the planning commission that once we have our final lot layout pinned down, we would provide a vegetated buffer on the backs of those lots so that you wouldn't, you'd have screening between the lots that were bound and the lots that are in front. Again, there's a massive flood plain that's associated with Hudson River, and there is a creek in the back of this property that runs down, but all that's natural water that we have no control over, other than what the last lady brought up is, yes, there is a lot of water coming off of the highway from the other side of the road through pipes and across this property. So that's DOT water that we have no control over. So we're actually receiving issues from DOT that we think, so we'll be able to mitigate some of that. Yes, we can probably handle some drainage structures or do some things to help divert or project water, but anytime you start diverting water, you start concentrating flows again and you start creating more erosion, which could become an issue. So the more, the quicker you can get water back to sheet flow, the better off against these. So that's obviously what we're trying to do.
Okay. Commissioners, we'll start with Commissioner Wester. Do you have questions? Commissioner Foster, do you have questions? Mr. Franklin? Okay. If there are no other questions, we appreciate it. We will make a decision. Oh, I'm sorry. I left off Commissioner Swales. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right. Any more questions before we finish? Okay. Thank you. We'll make a decision at the next, at the regular board meeting following this hearing. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. At this time, without objection, the public hearing stands adjourned at seven twenty-two. We will start the regular meeting at seven thirty. We need just a bit of a break. So at this time, we stand adjourned. This time, I call to order a regular board meeting of the Franklin County Board of Commissioners on Monday, April the fourth, two thousand twenty-two, at seven thirty P M. at the Franklin County Justice Center here in Consoles, Georgia. We note for the record that we have a quorum consisting of all five commissioners present. We have four commissioners here tonight, and Commissioner Swales is joining us by Zoom. So Commissioner Swales, can you affirm that you're present?
Yes, I am present.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Swales. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. At this time, we're going to have an invocation by Commissioner Wester, and then afterwards, we just ask that everybody remain standing and join us in the pledge. So please stand.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today, Lord. We thank you for the many blessings that you have laid upon us, Father, and we thank you that we were able to live in a free country, Lord, and that we're able to gather and do the business of Franklin County, Father. I just ask that you would just be with each one of us on this board, Lord, that you would provide us the wisdom and the knowledge and the guidance that we need to make the best decisions for Franklin County, Father. And, Father, I ask that as we go into the coming week, Father, that you just continue to bless us, Lord, continue to look over us and continue to help Franklin County prosper and all of its citizens. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda. So at this time, is there a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has made a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the agenda as presented, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, do you vote in favor?
I vote to approve.
Thank you. Motion will carry forward to zero, and tonight's agenda is approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is a personnel report from the county manager, Mr. Turner. Do you have anything for us tonight? Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the prior meeting minutes for the following meetings. A public hearing on March the seventh, two thousand twenty-two, a regular board meeting on March the seventh, two thousand twenty-two, a special call meeting on March the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and a work session on March the twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two. All the commissioners have been provided with a copy of the draft minutes for these prior meetings. We need to make the following corrections to the regular board meetings for March the seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Item seven B is a SPOSS allocation to the fire departments. The wording makes it seem we've given them a new allocation of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, so we need to clarify in the minutes that we are providing a total SPOSS five allocation of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to each fire department, and any SPOSS five expenditures that have already been made would be deducted from the total allocation. Anybody have a comment or question about that correction? Okay. And then on item seven C, this states that the total rural fire department payment is forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. The total payment for all rural fire departments is three hundred and forty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars, and then the total for each individual rural department is the forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three. So we need to clarify this because the wording isn't clear as to whether forty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars is for one department or all departments. And it's actually not that way, that there's a similar total given for the city fire departments that included the total for all of them. So we need to make sure we structure that description the same way so that it makes sense. Anybody have a question about that? Okay. Any of you know of any other corrections that need to be made? Any others? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes with corrections noted?
Make a motion that we approve the prior meeting minutes with the corrections noted, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes with the corrections noted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the prior meeting minutes with the corrections noted, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
Vote to approve.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the prior meeting minutes are approved with the corrections noted. The next item on the agenda is public comment. During this portion of the meeting, any member of the public may speak on any topic of concern they would like to address to the board, with the exception that no comments will be permitted on pending planning and zoning items, as we've just had a public hearing on those items. This is a comment section only. If you have questions, we're going to ask you to submit those in writing at the end of the meeting, along with your contact information, and we'll have someone call you and get back to you in the next few days. When you come to the podium, please begin by giving your name and address in order to facilitate the meeting and allow everyone an opportunity to speak. Each person must limit their comments to five minutes or less. Each person may only speak once, and you may not yield unused time to another person. We'll have a timer visible so that you can see how much remaining time you have and adjust your remarks. Members of the public are required to follow the same rules of the quorum that each of the commissioners must follow. This includes being respectful and civil and avoiding personal attacks. Again, as we said before, we ask that you help us facilitate a fair and impartial meeting by being courteous. We'll give each person sufficient time to express your concerns, and we ask that you are courteous and respectful of others. We also ask each person to take care, to observe and respect the five-minute time limit. This will be strictly enforced. Members of the public are not permitted to interrupt while others are speaking, and we respectfully ask that you refrain from side conversations so that everyone can be heard. At this time, if you would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. And again, we won't take any comments on pending planning and zoning items, but any other comments are fine. You can come on up.
Hello, my name is Maggie West.
We actually have you on the agenda, so did you want to do it then?
Usually you have me in this part.
No, you're a separate agenda item. You want to wait and do it then?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. Thank you.
I'll hear you.
That's all right. Anyone else like to make a public comment? If you'll raise your hand? Anyone? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item, which is seven items for discussion. The first item is seven A, a rezone request. Corridor Development Incorporated of one five five zero North Brown Road, Suite one twenty-five, Lawrenceville, Georgia, three zero zero four three, has filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential multifamily on an approximately forty-seven point four acre tract of land located at the intersection of Highway fifty-one and Highway fifty-nine and further identified as tax parcel number zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of tax parcel number zero two one dash zero one four. So at this time, we'll have our planning director, Mr. Delosier, summarize this application for the board.
Good evening, gentlemen, again. So as you stated, Corridor Development has requested to rezone a forty-seven point four eight acre tract of land, tax parcel number zero two one zero one three and a portion of zero two one zero one four. The applicants are seeking rezoning combined with multiple variance requests for a three hundred ninety-nine town home unit development. Do you want to discuss, do you want to discuss variances as well?
I do. We want to make sure we're clear with what they have said that is acceptable to them and what you have, because we are going to handle that as a separate agenda item, but is it appropriate we just consider that here as well? Okay.
Yeah, so the variance that were requested was an increase in density from eight units to eight point four units. Again, that recommendation is to deny that variance. There was a request to increase the number of units per building from four units that we call out as allowable to six units. Staff recommendation is to deny that variance as well. There's a variance request to go from a front setback of fifty feet to fifteen feet, and the staff recommendation is to deny that variance. There's a variance on the side yard setbacks to go from twenty feet to ten feet. Staff recommendation is to deny that. And then the front, I mean, the rear setback variance from fifty feet to twenty-five feet. Staff recommendation for that is to deny that variance, but do allow a reduction to thirty-five foot. As stated, our most intense in any of the residential district setback is thirty-five foot. Therefore, that's where that thirty-five foot recommendation comes from.
Okay.
The overall rezoning from residential, I mean, from ag-intensive to residential multifamily is a recommendation to approve, but essentially ensure that the developers follow regulations and guidelines that we have set in place for the county. Planning Commission did hear this at the regular scheduled Planning Commission meetings, and their recommendation was to deny all of them. And then there's also a rezone request for the same tract of land from ag-intensive to highway business, be a roughly five acre tract of land. Planning Commission recommended denying that request. The staff's recommendation is to approve that request.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delosier. We're going to take questions from commissioners, but let's, we're going to take each of the three applications one by one, so let's focus on questions on the rezone. Commissioner Wester, do you have any? Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Franklin? Commissioner Swales, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay. Okay, thank you. All right. At this time, is there a motion to act on the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential multifamily for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four?
I'll make a motion to deny, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to deny the application by Corridor Development for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential multifamily for tax parcel zero one two dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four. Is that correct? Restate your motion. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to deny, oh, I'm sorry. I need to ask, Commissioner Swales, do you have anything that you want to add before we move to the vote? Okay. Hearing none, or no more discussion. All in favor of the motion to deny the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential multifamily for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. And Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I vote to deny.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to residential multifamily for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four is denied. The next item is seven B, a variance request. Corridor Development Incorporated, one five five oh North Brown Road, Suite one twenty-five, Lawrenceville, Georgia, three zero zero four three, has filed a variance application for an increase in density and increase in the number of units allowed per building, as well as a front, side, and rear setback variance for residential multifamily development on approximately forty-seven point four eight acre tract of land located at the intersection of Highway fifty-one and fifty-nine, Highway fifty-nine, and further identified as tax parcel number zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of tax parcel number zero two one dash zero one four. This time, I'm going to call for a motion to table this request as it is no longer, it's basically moot because we've denied the zoning. So at this time, is there a motion to table this variance application by Corridor Development for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has made a motion to table the variance application by Corridor Development Incorporated for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no more, no discussion. All in favor of the motion to table the variance application by Corridor Development Incorporated for tax parcels zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four, signify by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
Vote to approve.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the variance application by Corridor Development Incorporated for tax parcel zero two one dash zero one three and a portion of zero two one dash zero one four is tabled. Seven C is a rezone request. Corridor Development Incorporated of one five five oh North Brown Road, Suite one twenty-five, Lawrenceville, Georgia, three zero zero four three, has filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to highway business on an approximately five acre tract of land located at the intersection of Highway fifty-one and Highway fifty-nine and further identified as tax parcel number zero two one dash zero one four. So at this time, Mr. Delosier, if you'll summarize that for us again.
So it'd be an approximate five acre tract of land. They're looking at a convenience store with some retail space, commercial retail space could be used for multiple, multiple different items, such as restaurants, you know, real estate agent office, those sorts of things. Additionally, they are looking to behind it, put in some storage units. So. So that is at the exact intersection of Highway 51 and Highway 59. Again, the staff's recommendation on that was to approve. Planning Commission's recommendation was to deny.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, at this time, are there any questions? We'll start with Commissioner Franklin, do you have anything? Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Wester? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions before we move to a vote? This time, is there a motion to act on the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive to highway business for tax parcel 021-014?
I'll make a motion that we do that.
Thank you. Mr. Franklin has made a motion that we deny the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to highway business for tax parcel 021-014. Is there a second to his motion?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the notion, I'm sorry, all in favor of the motion to deny the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to highway business for tax parcel 021-014, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I vote to deny.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the application by Corridor Development Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to highway business for tax parcel 021-014 is denied. The next item on the agenda is 7D, a rezon request. Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated of 196 Bel Air Court, Winder, Georgia 30680, has filed an application for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to residential single family on an approximately 23.99 acre tract of land located on State Route 326, and further identified as tax parcel number 014-045C. This time, Mr. Delosier, if you'll summarize that application for the board.
Yeah, so as stated, Ridgeline Planning has requested to rezon roughly 23.99 acres. 014 as 045C is the tax parcel number. They're seeking to develop 10 single-family houses on this 23.99 acre tract of land. The Planning Commission heard this at the regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting. Their recommendation was to, I mean, to table the rezon and table the variance request. That's, I will stand with the Planning Commission's recommendation on that. I think the applicant has some information that he can provide to the Planning Commission that might, at this point, now better assist him in that decision making.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delosier. At this time, we'll have questions for Mr. Delosier from commissioners. Commissioner Wester, do you have anything? Commissioner Franklin? Commissioner Foster?
No.
Commissioner Swales, do you have any questions?
No questions.
None, okay. All right. Any more questions before we move on? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to act on the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from ag-intensive or agriculture intensive to residential single family for tax parcel number 014-045C?
I'll make a motion that we table this per Planning and zoning's recommendation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has made a motion to table the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to residential single family for tax parcel number 014-045C. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to table the application by Ridgeline Planning for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map from agriculture intensive to residential single family for tax parcel number 014-045C, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I vote to table as well.
Okay, thank you. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an amendment to the Franklin County zoning map for agriculture intensive to residential single family for tax parcel number 014-045C is tabled. And Mr. Samuel, should we, I should have asked this earlier, when we are tabling this, is it automatically going back to planning and zoning?
Yes.
Okay. And that's the understanding of all commissioners?
Yeah.
Mr. Swales, is that your understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, 7E is a variance request for Ridgeline Planning Incorporated, 196 Bel Air Court, Winder, Georgia 30680, has filed a variance application for an increase in panhandle length on a flag lot on an approximately 23.99 acre tract located on State Route 326 and further identified as tax parcel number 014-045C. I'm going to call for a motion to table that as it is tied directly to the prior motion. So at this time, is there a motion to table the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an increase in panhandle length on a flag lot on tax parcel number 014-045C? And by tabling, we are referring it back to planning and zoning.
I'll make the motion to table.
The motion that we table for, for zoning.
Okay, we had two go at the same time. Commissioner Foster has made the motion to table and refer back to planning and zoning the application by Ridgeline Land Planning for an increase in panhandle length. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Wester, a second, a second to the motion. Is there any further discussion? Anything? Commissioner Swales? Any discussion?
No, no discussion.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no discussion, all in favor of the motion to table this application and refer back to planning and zoning the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an increase in panhandle length on a flag lot on tax parcel number 014-045C, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote to table as well.
Okay. The motion will carry forward to zero, and the application by Ridgeline Land Planning Incorporated for an increase in panhandle length on a flag lot on tax parcel number 014-045C is tabled and referred back to planning and zoning. The next item on the agenda is 7F, National Library Week proclamation. Ms. Maggie West is here to ask the board to approve a proclamation for National Library Week, so we're going to ask her to come up and talk to us. Good evening.
Before we approve the proclamation, I just want to give you all a quick update of going on at the library, if that's okay?
Mm-hmm.
This week is National Library Week. Since last I saw you, we have resumed our in-person storytimes weekly at both branches. And since September 2021 to March now, both branches have hosted 45 storytimes with over 350 children attending. We have read about architecture, different letters of the alphabet, learning that, different trucks, and famous buildings. Lebonia held a four-month-long architecture contest for children ages three to 12 based on famous architectures and buildings that we learned about during storytime. In December, we held a reception for the children that designed their own buildings, and we had 12 participants. Some of them drew them on poster boards, some actually created 3D models of homes. And the winners, we made a treehouse where you could see the inside of it, and the tree branches held like a little swing on, it was really cool to see. We had a local engineer via judge, as well as two engineers from Clark, Nexon, and Virginia. They were friends of Commissioner Swales' wife, so they agreed to help us out with the judging. And they were so impressed with the children's designs that they donated 10 children's books about architecture to the library to help keep their dreams alive for architecture in the future. At Royson, the Curious Gardeners Club started back in January, and while it was too cold at the time to go outside and plant crops, we used that time to learn about bees, beehives, plant anatomy, greenhouses, and certain terminology to prepare us for the warmer weather. We've met seven times, and we've got 130 children and 40 parents very eager to plant, harvest, and then cut crops in the Royson's Children's Garden. This program has taken over, run out of room, but soon we'll be outside, and they'll, they can't wait to get their hands in the dirt, so we're very excited. Royson has also seen a very drastic increase in the amount of teen participants in our programs. Ms. Bring the Hill, our teen coordinator, started a teen perks coffee shop in January, where every Thursday from 3:30 to 6:30, teens are invited to prepare a hot beverage with our coffee machine, play board games, make crafts, and make friends. This has been, we wanted to do it for just a month to see how it went, but it was so popular, they wanted us to do it till the end of the school year, so we're very excited to keep this program going. We've had 90 teens participate in this program, and we're very excited to see them there. And Lebonia has added an elementary age math club program to our itinerary. It's called the Crazy Eight Math Club. Every Friday at 4:30, they learn math in a fun, interesting way. They build 3D sculptures from glow sticks, and then they turn the lights off, and they can see how all the angles work. They do probability games, and it's just a fun way for them to learn math. This is all we have done in the past, way to the present. April 3rd through 9th is National Library Week with the theme Connect With Your Library, and I invite all in attendance to visit your local libraries and discover something that they know about us and what we can provide. We are not just a house of books, we are also a learning center. We teach, we teach basic computer courses, we teach toddlers how to read and love reading, and we teach teens how to find their voice and place in the world. We offer online resources that your library card can unlock for free. We offer Galileo for resource purposes, research purposes, Ancestry for genealogy, Mega Languages for educational pursuits, and Tutor.com for online tutoring for all grades and adults, and so much more. The library is an ever-evolving entity that revolves around what our community wants and needs, so please, if you've never visited the Lebonia Carnegie or the Royson Public Libraries before, do so this week. Let us know what you'd like to see from us, and let us know how we can connect with you.
Thank you. Misses, you have before you a proclamation declaring that the week of April 3rd through 9th, 2022, is National Library Week. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has made a motion to approve the proclamation. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the proclamation declaring the week of April 3rd through the 9th, 2022, that's this week, as National Library Week, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote in favor.
Thank you. Motion will carry forward to zero, and the proclamation is approved. It will be attached to the official minutes of this meeting and made available for public inspection. And Ms. West wants us to take a picture. Got a copy of this. All right, if we get everybody's attention, we're going to continue on. The next item on the agenda is 7G, subdivision moratorium. At a special call meeting, March 14th, the board voted to adopt a resolution enacting a moratorium on subdivisions for 90 days or until a review of the county's code, zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan was complete. And based on our discussion at the March 29th work session, by consensus, we determined we would not pursue a minimum, a zoning text amendment to increase minimum lot sizes for large subdivisions. Rather, we would pursue the proposed zoning districts and restrictions that are within the Unified Development Code that the county is going to consider for adoption within the next few months. We also talked about impact fees and learned that that could take at a minimum 10 to 12 months, which far exceeds what the scope of the moratorium we envisioned. Since that time, there have also been unintended consequences caused by the moratorium. Landholders, small landholders maybe have been unable to carve off land for family members for homes, or landowners, property owners have been unable to modify conservation use covenants. And then there's other significant impacts on the housing sector and construction. So ultimately, with our plans in place and the proposed timeframes that are involved, the moratorium we enacted no longer really is serving a purpose. Ultimately, that UDC is going to address those issues and drive growth to the areas of the county that we think are better suited for that, as well as preserving large tracts of agricultural land in the interior of the county, and that's what we felt like is important. And as always, even without the moratorium, the county, the Board of Commissioners can, will always hear any proposed developments, and we can ultimately decide yea or nay on those. So commissioners, you have a more, a resolution before you that would cancel the subdivision moratorium effective immediately, so is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has made a motion to adopt the resolution that would cancel the subdivision moratorium. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything to add before we move to a vote?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of adopting the resolution that would cancel the subdivision moratorium, signified by raising your right hand? All opposed, same sign. Okay. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote to cancel the moratorium.
Okay. The motion will carry three to one, and the resolution canceling the subdivision moratorium is approved, and that resolution is effective immediately. A copy of this resolution will be attached to the official minutes of tonight's meeting and made available for public inspection. Next item on the agenda is 7H, fees. At our work session on March 29th, 2022, we heard from staff about the implementation of impact fees and then proposed increases in TAP fees and Culbert FIP fees. Collectively, these are water enterprise fees. So first, we'll do the impact fees. Mr. Delosier, do you have anything additionally? I know we talked about that. Do we have any movement on that or any more additional information?
We did, we did get a proposal, a contract adjustment from Mr. Jerry White's for amount to not to exceed $36,018 to get us all the way through the impact fees, says not to exceed 12 months of.
Can you give that mounting at $36,018?
$36,018.
Okay. And not to exceed 12 months?
Correct.
Okay. Is that something we need to vote on right now, or we just need to develop the contract first?
Well, the, so we already have the contract in place with him for the zoning map, the UDC and all that. This would actually be just an amendment to that contract. That way, we're pretty confident there's going to be, we're going to come in under budget on the UDC side of it. budget on the UDC side of it, and we're pretty confident we're going to come in under budget on the impact fee side of it. Should there be a need for some flex, some flexibility in the funding, doing this as an amendment to the contract will give us that flexibility.
So we, well, we don't have an amendment tonight to consider, right?
It's not, it is not in front of you. It would be something that could actually be, be done by the county manager.
Okay, so do we need, is there a vote necessary for that?
I, I think it would be appropriate for there to be a motion to addition of.
So add that amount to the consultant contract that's currently in force?
Correct.
Okay. And do we, do we need to specify that time limit?
I think so. Both, both of those were not to exceed, the amount also is not to exceed.
So, so the impact fee part, that's twelve months from now, correct? Not, not the twelve months that operate, that other part of the contract.
It'd be twelve months from the time that we execute the contract.
Okay. Okay. All right, commissioners, do we have a motion to authorize the?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question real quick.
Yes.
I had a question from a school board member. He was asking if we can put in an impact fee for the school system, because he said that they were told we had to do it, that they couldn't do it. I, because I told him I didn't know.
Is that something you could talk to the school system attorneys about?
Oh, yeah, that would be.
Is that, is that okay? That, that is a good thing we need to clarify, because if they want to, now's the time to do it, whether we do it or they do it. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so we'll, we'll have Mr. Samuels talk to the school systems attorneys and, and see what the best course of action there is. So this time's their motion to authorize the addition of thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars to the consultant contract for the UDC for the impact fee portion with a provision that it's not to exceed twelve months of completion.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has made the motion to authorize the addition of thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars to the consultant contract for the UDC for the impact fee portion not to exceed, with a provision that it not exceed twelve months for completion of impact fees. Is that correct? Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioners, Swales, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion to authorize the addition of thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars to the consultant contract for impact fees with a provision that the impact fees be completion date not to exceed twelve months, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. And Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote in agreement with the board.
Okay, thank you. The motion will carry four to zero, and we approve the, the motion to authorize the addition of thirty-six thousand eighteen dollars to that consultant contract for the UDC with a provision, for impact fees, with a provision that it not exceed twelve months is passed, approved. Our public works staff have proposed the increase in water and sewer tap fees and culvert pipe fees, and we're going to collectively refer to that as water enterprise fees. So do we have staff, or do you want to present that to us, the?
Yeah, I can go right through it.
Yes.
Just really briefly to talk about this, staff did talk about this at the work session, and we're just looking at trying to increase our fee structure to bring ourselves up to cover costs. In some cases, we're well below cost, or we are far off from what other budgets are doing at this time. So just talking about tap fees to start, we have in front of you, what we're currently charging, we have three quarters is seven hundred fifty dollars, the increased request going to fifteen hundred.
Hold on. If, if y'all are excellent, we want to ask you to get up quietly and leave so everybody can hear what's being said. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Again, a three quarters inch tap would be, we're currently charging seven hundred fifty dollars, looking at going to fifteen hundred, and we look at that top line comparable counties being in Madison, Warren Banks, we're talking in Madison being at currently fifteen fifty, Park being at fourteen hundred, and Banks County being sixteen seventy-five. You'll notice that throughout the rest of that chart, it is just trying to get us on par with what neighboring counties are, really essentially with both of these fees. Increasing them is going to put us to where we're recouping costs. We currently don't have sewer tap fees whatsoever, so this should get us with tap fees to get those in line with Livonia, Topeka, Royston, so adjoining cities. Do you have any questions first about tap or sewer tap?
Questions?
Of course. Okay. And just continue on just real quick to the pipe comparison. Currently, with what we're doing to that, we were losing money on those, so fifteen by twenty, we're losing about a hundred and thirty-three dollars, just in, and that's just in the actual pipe. When you go to the chart below that, we're talking about the actual cost of installation. So that cost of pipe, we're talking about man hours that are included with that to dump a load of dirt, two hours of using a backhoe, so we're really looking at a pretty substantial loss whenever we're going to those. So with that, with that one, then staff recommends just covering costs. So really, what we're talking about is instead of that total cost being about eight hundred six dollars, recommendation would be for that, when we go to eight hundred twenty-five dollars, eighteen inch, for what staff recommendation is, go to nine hundred dollars, and for twenty-four, go into ten fifty emissions. I think for our tap fees, it's all pretty outright as far as how they're lined up, but this is just to make sure that we're recouping the cost of those, of those services and fixtures.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Turner? Okay. This time, is there a motion to approve the rate increases proposed for the water enterprise fees?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has made a motion to approve the proposed rate increases for water enterprise fees. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything to ask or add?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor of the motion to approve the proposed rate increases for water enterprise fees, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote to approve this piece.
Okay. The motion will carry four to zero, and the proposed water enterprise fee increases are approved, and we need to attach a list of these fee increases to the minutes and make that available for public. Next item on the agenda is seven I, the EMS Council appointment, and tonight, we need to make an appointment to the National EMS Advisory Council, so I'll ask Mr. Turner to make that recommendation.
Our current staff member that's been appointed at the pass was Terry Harris, so I recommend that we reappoint Terry Harris to serve the council.
And what's the term on that?
That is from twenty-two to twenty-five, January twenty-two to twenty-five.
So this is kind of a retroactive appointment, January twenty-two to January twenty-five?
That's right.
Okay. Is there a motion to appoint Terry Harris to the National EMS Council, Advisory Council Region Two?
I'm going to, I'm motion for an appointment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster's made the motion to appoint Terry Harris to the National EMS Advisory Council Region Two. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to appoint Terry Harris to the National EMS Advisory Council Region Two, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote to appoint Terry.
Okay, thank you. Motion will carry four to zero, and Terry Harris is appointed to the National EMS Advisory Council Region Two, and that's actually a reappointment. Next item on the agenda, seven J, L-MIG two thousand twenty-two project, so we reviewed the bids for those at the, at the work sessions, so I asked Mr. Turner to, to go back over that and make the presentation.
Absolutely. So what we talked about with, looking at our L-MIG, we did already do the bid opening, we have in front of you what this project consists of, with the Old Road, Bull Springs Church Road, Britta Cove, Lake Shore Drive. The thing that we have to decide on tonight is the options, between that we have two options that are in front of you. With these two options, staff does recommend option one, which is going to get us better surface coverage. It does cost the county an additional one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars that would have to be allocated to this project in addition to the L-MIG funds in our current match. So the overall project would be nine hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred, but a much better long-term solution than essentially option two, would just be doing kind of patchwork until we then are able to get to that river.
Okay, so the additional funding that we have to approve is one fifty-six?
That's right.
Six forty-seven?
That's right.
And then we need to include that in our motion?
That's correct.
If we, and we're, and the staff is recommending that we award the bid to Stratton Suns, the low bid?
That's correct.
Okay. Any questions before we consider a vote? Okay. Is there a motion to award the bid for option one to Stratton Suns with the additional funding required from the county of one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars for the L-MIG two thousand twenty-two projects?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Wester's made the motion to award the L-MIG two thousand twenty-two projects bid to Stratton Suns with option number one, which is what staff recommended, with an additional cost to the county of one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. So is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Swales, do you have anything to add or ask?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion to award the L-MIG two thousand twenty-two projects bid to Stratton Suns and pursue option one with additional cost of one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote along with the board.
Okay. The motion will carry four to zero, and the L-MIG two thousand twenty-two projects bid is awarded to Stratton Suns Construction for option one, which was recommended by staff with additional cost of one hundred fifty-six thousand dollars and six hundred, one hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars. And we should make a copy of those bids public, attached to the minutes. Okay. Moving right along. Next item is seven K, Roth Retirement. So at our work session, our county manager proposed adding an employee Roth Retirement Plan for the current offerings for employees, beginning with fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. So Mr. Turner, you want to summarize that?
Yeah, so what we talked about in the work session, this is just an additional option for staff, something that the board has to vote on and approve, and again, this, the difference of what we have, we currently do have four oh one A, we have four fifty-seven pre-tax, this will be adding a four, basically a four fifty-seven post-tax. So it does have some benefits for everybody, because as you take that out upon retirement, you would not be then taxed again on this, but essentially, this is just a different option, so that everybody can diversify, have options towards their retirement if somebody did not want pre-tax four fifty-seven, this would be another opportunity that they would have. Overall cost to the county, and what we look at is probably in the ballpark of about forty thousand dollars a year. Like I said before, we don't have a lot of people that are necessarily on the four fifty-seven, but this just gives more opportunity and maybe another option that someone might want to get in for.
Commissioners, do you have questions? Commissioners, Swales, do you have any questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve the Employee Roth Retirement Plan offering for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three?
I'll make that motion, Mr. President.
All right, we'll give it to Commissioner Swales, made the motion to approve Employee Roth Retirement Plan offering for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the Employee Roth Retirement Plan offering for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioners, Swales, how do you vote?
I approve.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and the Employee Roth Retirement Plan offering for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three is approved. The next item on the agenda is seven L, the Election IGA. So commissioners, you've got a series of proposed intergovernmental agreements between Franklin County and Karnesville, and with Cannon, and with Franklin Springs and Royston, where each city contracts with a county to conduct their elections. The only new addition to this group is Royston. Previously, they were doing their own elections, but they now allow, want the county to do so. And the resolutions provide for each city to pay the cost and assume the liability related to, and the cost of liability related to the elections. So are there any questions on that? You, you have anything else to add to?
I've scheduled that. We're excited to get back in partnership with Royston.
With Royston.
So this is, I think, really good opportunity for us to, to, to get back in business with them and to take over their elections.
And we also do Livonia, but it's just not time to renew their agreement, so there, we're still doing Livonia as well. Any questions? All right, we'll do those separately. For Cannon, is there a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Cannon?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Franklin's made the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Cannon. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Cannon, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. And Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote along with the board.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Cannon is adopted and approved. For Karnesville, is there a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Karnesville? I'm sorry. Okay. Commissioner Franklin's made the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Karnesville. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Foster has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Karnesville, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote along with the board.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and the IGA for the county to adopt, conduct elections for the city of Karnesville is adopted and approved. For Franklin Springs, is there a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Franklin Springs?
I'll make a motion to adopt, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester's made a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Franklin Springs. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Franklin Springs, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioner Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote along with the board.
Okay. Motion will carry four to zero, and the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Franklin Springs is adopted and approved. And then lastly, for Royston, is there a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Royston?
I'll make that motion, city of Royston.
Thank you. Commissioner Franklin's made a motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Royston. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wester has seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to adopt the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Royston, signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Commissioners, Swales, how do you vote?
I'll vote along with the board.
Okay. The motion will carry four to zero, and the IGA for the county to conduct elections for the city of Royston is adopted and approved, and a copy of each of these intergovernmental agreements will be attached to the official minutes of tonight's meeting and made available for public inspection. So number eight is the next item, county manager's report.
I have no, no report.
Okay. And then the next, the next item on the agenda is announcements. Mr. Turner, do you have anything?
Yeah, just do have one announcement, I guess, just some more appreciation, just appreciation that county has for our marshal. We know that it is a tough job and very busy, and we do appreciate his diligence and everything that he's doing. You know, even though he is very busy, paying attention to detail, we appreciate, even though it might be a minor offense that he might be on his way towards a major offense, he doesn't pass by minor offenses that are on, that are on the streets. Of course, we can't just overlook things, no matter what it is, or no matter what that minor offense may be, even if we are on, so we do just want to appreciate our marshal for the hard work that he's doing.
Thank you. Anything, anything else? All right. We echo that. We appreciate you, Mr. Franklin. We, we need, we need a good marshal. We need, and code enforcement is very important, and we haven't always had that. There have been gaps, so we appreciate that word. Last week at our work session, we had a citizen come to us, and he relayed a disturbing incident a few weeks back. His wife collapsed at home, and when he attempted to call 911, he said that he was kept on the phone for a long period, what he felt was a long period of time, listening to a recorder before he actually reached 911 and could get help. And this is very concerning, and so we conducted an internal review, and we were able to determine what actually happened with his call. And this is one of those instances where he called with a cell phone, and the nearest tower, when you, when you make a call with a cell phone, the nearest tower picks that up. Well, the nearest tower happened to be in Oconee County, South Carolina. And so whenever a cell tower receives a 911 call, it must send it to its jurisdiction, the county of its jurisdiction. So his 911 call was picked up in Oconee County, South Carolina, and went to the Oconee County 911. And then, of course, they had to work to forward it back to Franklin County, and that cost some time, and we understand that that was, you know, very distressing for him. That's an issue with cellular communications, and there's nothing that Franklin County can fix. We conducted an internal review, and our 911 staff handled everything appropriately as soon as they received the call. And that's one of the things, we regret it that he experienced that, and he, we, he certainly is in our thoughts and prayers and has our condolences. But we did want to assure everyone that we followed through with that because we wanted, it's very concerning. We wanted to know exactly what happened. And so we just wanted to, to report back on that, not, not be something that's just left hanging out there. I don't have any other announcements. Commissioner Wester, do you have anything? Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Freddie, for what you do, and thank our 911 dispatchers for the hard work they do.
Commissioner Franklin? Okay. The next item then is to adjourn. So at this time, is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Swales, do you have anything?
Y'all know I can't let a meeting end without saying something, so I'm sorry.
I do not believe she is.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, again, sometimes they cost, and, you know, and so a couple months, I would encourage us to, you know, the funding is a lot,[1762.85]